I'm here to be part of the meeting today, July 5th. Number five, public. Thank you everyone. I am going to, I see we have somebody out in Zoom land who wants to talk to us, Patty. Burt Schell.
No, no, that's.
Is that?
That's the.
Oh, that's perfect. So we have a plan for instead of a hand. All right, for those of you who are joining by remote, please make sure that your microphones are muted. If you are here to participate in a public hearing, that's great. Just unmute yourself and we will recognize you, state your name, address the record, and then the floor will be yours. And let's try to be each other and try and, you know, we'll give you extra time. Because sometimes in Zoom land, things don't come as quick as in person. So we'll give you time for responses to them. And we'll try not to talk over you. Yes, if you don't talk over us, because we want a clear record. Or. Okay. I'm going to ask that Richard will call at this point.
Daley. Andre Miller here. Diane Joycey.
Here.
In the case of.
Here.
Jonathan Bailey.
Here.
Scott Hamel. John Dakin. Steve Skues.
Yes.
And Steve Biala Jr. and Nancy B. Regular member of. You know.
Thank you very much. Now, just as a reminder, we have to get cell phones to be muted. That was just probably the whole mission. Right? Thank you. All right, on to segment four or section four, which is scheduled in public hearings. We have a moratorium on canvas uses for the extension through October 1st, 2023. We have a suggestive day for some moratorium as August 17th. Make a motion to schedule through August 17th. We have a vote motion by Mr. Joycey. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zigmo for the discussion. Okay, I think it's both the one public hearings. So I'm going to answer our separate here to fall for the public hearings.
Yep. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission is the public here. The Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission will hold public hearings on Thursday, July 20th, at 7:00 PM in public chambers, Burlington Town Hall, 240 Connecticut Road, Attic. Interested parties. Interested parties may join the meeting and participate in the public hearing in person or remotely as provided below. A, proposed tax amendment, Newport 848, Farmington Ave, LLP, two men, section 8F of Berlins zoning regulations. B, application of 1906 Berlin LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire, Alter and Pearson LLC, in pursuit of the Connecticut General Statute 830G of affordable housing land use appeal. One, proposed zone amendment to create new 11TE planned residential inbuilt development, inclusionary multifamily residential use with housing opportunity or workforce housing component. And, and two, application site plan approval for a permit of 52-unit multi-family residential community, book apartments. Real property is noted, 1906, map 21-2 block 115, lot 7, 1934 Berlin Turnpike, map 21 plus 2 block 115, lot 8, and 0 Berlin Turnpike, map 21-2 block 115, slot 8A. B, application of Little House Living LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith Esquire, Alter and Pearson LLC, submitted pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 830G of affordable housing land use appeal. One, proposed zone tax amendment to create new 11TE planned residential inbuilt development, exclusionary multifamily residential use with a housing opportunity or workforce housing component. And two, application for a site plan approval to permit a 20-unit multi-family residential community real property known as 1676 Berlin Turnpike, map 22, that's 1 block 114 block 10. The application and related heating materials are available at the planning and zoning department, Burlington Town Hall, 240 Connecticut Road, Berlin, Connecticut. Day of July 2022, at Berlin, Connecticut, Brian Rabin Secretary, Berlin Planning and Zoning Commission, Dubert and Harold Beagle notices slash has a classified advertising date of publication Monday, July 10, 2023, and Monday, July 17, 2023.
And Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjust the schedule a little bit to move item B up to be the first item in the public hearings. We have a motion by Mr. Joycey. Do we have a second? Okay. Consider not for the discussion on this. Who's in favor? I, who's opposed? So this is subdivision application of M under a fair list for three residential lots, at map, map 11-1, block 127, lot 16, 35, Weathersfield Road. Yes.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Jack Gilmore, I'm with JL Survey. Like the reason I were asking to move it up, we've received some comments tonight. Eleven hour, I think, and this, this commission has said in the past that if we're not having things resolved and sit down, it's really, this courtesy from the commission after listen to an advocate where it still is out there. So what we'd like to do is table the meeting tonight, so we can go through the comments that we've just received about 20 minutes ago, and come back to you with the position.
And so we'll be looking to see you in two weeks.
Yes.
Okay. Is that August 3rd?
I apologize for standing before August 3rd.
Well, this is presented by Mr. Bigmont, second by Ms. Joycey for the discussion. If all of us in favor. So if you weren't here for the Weathersfield Development, Weathersfield Road, we will not be hearing it tonight. It's going to be continued to the August 3rd meeting. I'll do a couple of minutes, just a minute. Then we'll change, we'll go back to you. And we hope to see you all back. Okay, going back to item A, which is subdivision application of Kokomo Brothers for final lot subdivision of lots 46 and 46B, block 142, 170 Royal Pond Road, and 243 Somerset Road. And we have anyone here for Mr. Kokomo's project? Yeah. Well, I'm just looking for the applicant. I'm sorry, are you the applicant? No, okay. So.
So I, yeah. Um, so the, we are continuing, the applicant's attorney is continuing to.
Sir, I'm sorry, Maria, your microphone off just because I.
Yeah. Really need into this one, just want to. Can hear it. They, they all moved it, but you must have received something at the top. So the attorney is continuing to pursue with town staff and Corporation Council reasons, things on ownership issues. And please proceed as proposed with use of command. Some improvements will be used to manage for those improvements. If they're not present, and we don't have the right to inform them, which it doesn't seem that we do, I suggest that you either, that you open the hearing and briefly restate that it continue without hidden testimony, because we don't have. Extension, we have to. Reach out to them, to be granted an extension. To continue and then. For again, with opening the bottom hearing. Without the session. So. Open hearing without making testimony.
So you're suggesting reopen the public hearing except no testimony, just continue.
And just enjoy it, and that's the. Of the line to have a public hearing open, which is the date.
What is the word? Do we know what the fact was facing the sampling? 35 days, that's why.
And represented to Corporation Council, I looked into that email, that we in the councils that they were working on resolution and we were searching through these. With them. At the same time, the termative is if you give us information with regard to the hurdle recording. Make a decision to call it on and take the action. They do have hurdles.
Okay. Um, okay, so.
Sure, I know this question, we do have people, new audience here, they want to speak on this subject. And I say that we can open up the, the hearing. Listen to who wants to speak now, yeah, can, can press, address that, that the next meeting. If you open up the public hearing, people are here, they gave the word, yes. And they're here again. I know, we should give them a chance to speak.
The courtesy, even though we.
No, no, I.
But this.
They have an opinion of the public hearings.
Well.
We should allow them to do that.
All right, so. So we'll go ahead and open this public hearing. Is there anyone here who wishes to address the commission regarding the application of moving? Oh, wait, wait, I'm sorry. Okay, so we have the motion second, there's Mr. Joycey, so the motion goes to Mr. Zigmo. Okay, thank you. Um, so if you want to, yeah. All of the better, I, I just post somewhere, sorry, we missed. So if there's anyone here who wants to address the commission regarding this application, and if you do so, you can carry your microphone, could state your name and address for the record, and then accept testimony again. I apologize, we don't have any information, so. Looking to find more, I mean, you know, that's okay. Take a whack at it.
Okay. My name is Susan Louchy, I live at 15 Ketchumberry Road. My husband, Henry Louchy, is one-third owner of the lot property.
You really have to lean into the mic to talk as.
No, I think you can continue to help. My husband, Henry Louchy, is one-third owner of the property. The question is all by three siblings, Carol, Sidney, Oren, and Henry Louchy. And we want to talk about pending this application for subdivision. We'd like the subdivision to be denied. The first reason, James O'Hearn, who signed the paperwork, is not an owner of the property. He committed fraud by saying he was an owner with you guys. We didn't, and second, we did not make any deals with the Kokomo Brothers. We never talked to him prior to his submission of the application. Again, he's doing it fraudulently, saying he has corrupt ability to do this division. Number three, all of this was done behind the two owners, Carol Thompson and Henry Louchy's family. A neighbor found out about the, being listed that planning and zoning, and he started talking to the other neighbors, and they came up and asked us what was going on. So we don't believe that this is done the correct way. We don't believe that they have the authority to go through with this subdivision request. Also, this involves a part pool of land on Somerset Drive. Okay, in June of 2015, John Curran got permission for planning and zoning to adjust the boundary line so he could sell his house. Planning and zoning, zoning okayed since no new lot being created. Lot line was adjusted. I'll give you copies of this. Lot 4016 was supposed to be conveyed to 40, to lot 46, it's written by the lot planner. John Curran never conveyed the law. It's still in his name. He sold his house, and he bent the property line, but did not follow through with any of the rest of the requirements. He essentially did an unauthorized subdivision. Shouldn't planning and zoning follow through with his lie and penalty for lying for planning and zoning? If you approve this subdivision request, we believe that John Curran will benefit from it. If you look at the new subdivision request, you would see that lot 4016 becomes a separate building. Even if we don't let Kokomo go through with building on the upper part, um, John Curran will be able to sell off his lower part and therefore get his subdivision legitimate, uh, hypnotized by you guys. Therefore, please deny the application. With the subdivision, everything for everybody.
That's right. That's our thing, okay? And again, if us both to. You can see this. So the, so we will need to speak to the record. I believe.
I shouldn't say, I don't, if it's not the same letter that.
No.
They just, they wrote it up today. It's an updated letter, so you had previously received the parts on this. The Louchys, the three yard TV. So. This happened. Put on the record of this. Into the record and they. The application. So one of the outstanding issues that repeated advice from Corporation Council, which is not real, is the availability of applications of the application. As the, they want to, the proposal includes utilizing portion of Sage Park because of the late Sage Park was obtained in grants that were in place to purchase the property, to get the property, or to make it a principal property. There needs to be assist file to utilize the. So. It is up to the convention if you choose to deny it because of the outstanding issues and seizure matters, they are, they are significant issues. And I'm not sure they can be resolved within the 35 days. Yeah, again. Racing Council, so we will forward. By this. And for the applicant, this week, I am the attorney. I always err on the side of servitudeness with regard to, I don't, I recommend just write and say something, but that is certainly substantial nature of the application.
Yeah, it seems to be the waters are really muddy on this lot.
So the validity of the application with regard to the applicant and the title of the property, ownership with the, with regard to the patient and the sign up that we get from otherwise agent of the applicant, which the, as Miss Sludgy said, uh, there's a question as to whether Mr. Oren was on the staff. The owners, owners, unfortunately, the owners. And then, yeah, that's, well. It is, it seems apparent that DEP approval will be, commission approval would be required to allow a swap of land that could allow for the improvement as the they proposed. So that we would imagine would take around 35 days, we argue, because we've dealt with agencies, some agencies, I mean, as far as we know, no application has been made to be that yet.
I'm not getting one fuzzy feeling about this application at all.
I did. The concern I had is that it's not here to be settled. Yeah. Office, yes. Staffs, they're going to be advised on. Usually, you have to, it's going to be.
Attorney just came. He was a little bit on. She's just walking back door and walking along. Wow, see, that's a hallway. Hiding behind the door, I think.
Well, you know, I mean, she thought that, but you know, the thing that is, is that there, there are elements here. I don't think we want to involve this commission in this, uh, in this ownership dispute. Uh, this is not the reason that we have. And it should be clear and clear, it should be as far as ownership when applicant comes in and wants to do something with the property, so. Anyone else?
I also remember, I think I remember correctly. Development up there was brought in that the swap of land, I don't swap, given land to the town to attach to Sage Park. I know. You know, the previous. Land on there. They didn't know what's in the world, what's in the name.
Valentine?
Valentine. Valentine. Just giving some property to the Sage Park. See any, so any property from Sage Park that we see given for other than what his purpose of is.
Well, I mean, do, uh, am I hearing a motion from you?
I make a motion to deny.
Yeah, so public hearing is open, so.
If there's anyone else here in Zoom land or a person that wishes to comment on this application. Hearing not an initial.
Close the public hearing or deny the application.
Okay, all right, so we have a public hearing.
Okay, then we'll go back.
So a motion to close the public hearing. Mr. Zigmo, we had a second, so I was just throwing. So the discussion, all was in favor, and we'll pass a move going on, application of Anthony. Report 848. I see the proposed tax amendment of the Berlin zoning regulations, section 8, uh, Simson overlay zone, subsection 3B, special permit uses, village 4 area 2, subsections of affordability guide.
Okay, yeah. And I have a second. People in Zoom land, they can't handle. So I'm wondering, oh, and we lost, lost a stream for a second there. Um, so I'm doing that, everyone can see is their thing, maybe turn them off unless you're speaking. You turn them on only when you're going to speak, we'll see if that helps. I'm going to turn mine off. And then, unless I'm speaking, I actually mentioned use one of the others and hopefully resolve this. With online. I'm not.
So, um, who we have for the new, for Newport?
Pretty big, now the chair. I mean, like, we should go into the land, simple, we have Realty Group, 710 Main Street, Landville. I'm just going to read, read the narrative.
Yeah, could be. Daniel?
The issue first, that the commission has the narrative that, that Coria put together.
Yeah. It's going to be trying to fix the. So.
Have done that.
You need my assistance. You don't usually read those out. And we don't usually read them. Um, they've been distributed, and we can take.
We need to the commission, what you might like to proceed. The, the narrative does give a really good background and history of where we got to where we are today. There's the language regarding the tax amendment, what's ever, ever applying for. And I could do a very quick summary if you'd like that too.
And then I'll also note that as long as this, I go, it's working perfectly. Jim Mahoney, the applicant has worked with staff on this tax amendment, and the Mr. Mahoney has some additional information to go back to the commission with regard to the town's working on. Um, the advantages of this, or the reasoning for the.
Thank you. So just kind of quick recap, this is the cap, contending an overlay zone, special permit uses in the village 4 to area. As we're coming to Newport Realty Group, we're closely and long with staff to craft what we think is, you know, appropriate applicable text, text change amendment language. Now, again, the complete, the entire complete tax amendment can be found in the, in the Stafford report that Aron put together, which again, I commented, a great job with, with all the history. She, she mentioned things I even forgot about how long we've been working on this for. But I, I guess I'll give you a quick recap of, of the key points of tax amendment affecting 848 Farmington Avenue. Um, what we're promoting, proposing is it permits residential uses behind another building that has first floor commercial spaces, first floor commercial uses with residential uses located more than 75 feet from Farmington Avenue. So they'd be behind other buildings that have first floor commercial uses on Farmington Avenue, but a minimum of 75 feet from Farmington Avenue. Uh, residential uses with their, or like the apartments are multifamily, no more than two veterans per unit, one acre minimum, or selfless four acres. And the last part of it, last key point is seven units per whole acre provided that 20% of the units are affordable. For our proposal, which we'll see eventually, is going to be 50% affordable. Yeah, we think for some of the justification is first floor apartments, very appealing seniors, uh, and complimentary to the staff, to the, to the town's strategy of providing more affordable housing for seniors. Although not age restricted, of course, uh, we, we think there's an appeal there for our older population as well as the possibility of units being shared by roommates. Our proposal at 840 Farmington Avenue is going to be 10 apartments by 100 square feet apiece, um, and all two bedroom units. Again, 50% of those will be affordable, um, will be affordable based on an 80% of average median income. And just kind of recap too, to kind of help the commission understand how we're. And just kind of recap to the, to kind of help the commission understand how we're. We're supporting our affordable drive through town, uh, Berlin. When Newport's done with the entire Steel Center development, the property will be owned at eight forty eight Farmington and eight sixty one Farmington Avenue. We'll have a total of ninety seven multifamily units, gonna mix of one better, two bed, bedroom and then studios. Based on what we're going to have for affordable units, we got four decent affordable units right now in eight forty eight Farmington Avenue. We're going to have one affordable unit in fifty five Steel Boulevard, and of course we'll have the five proposed. Units at eight forty eight Farmington Avenue, we're, we're going to have ten percent of our project will be afforded. Again, supporting the town's try to get to that ten percent affordable for the, the entire town. Proactive in terms of traffic, which is always a question at public hearings or other times. As a reminder, we did reduce the inventory of fifty five Steel Boulevard, reduced that from sixty units to fifty. So we're adding ten years, so we see kind of a neutral effect on traffic because the same, uh, apartment count is going to apply. Also in the application package, there was a few things, there was a proposed site plan that had the seventy five foot, uh, border written on it. We have building elevations, proposed elevations from the building to the apartment building. We have a three D layout of a, a look at the apartments, and we have a support letter from Chris Edge. We have to give copies to those, of those things right now if we, if you needed them. And I, I would think I would like to tap into, I'm very, very, tap into maybe Jim Mahoney if he can. He can give a really comprehensive, um, kind of background of, of why we got here today. For this tax amendment and a lot of hard work by town and Newport to help pull together community challenge grant. Point today, Jim's got a really good background, maybe share some of that with us today.
Sure, can you, can you hear me? Uh, is the audio okay?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, thank you. So. I think the, yeah, again, the commission knows the background, some of the things that, uh, Tony has mentioned and, and Maureen mentioned during, in a report. The proposal is very similar to the concept plan that, that Civic Moxie has done back in twenty seventeen. When they done, did a study for the town and looked at adding additional units in the vicinity of the train station. And of course, we know that adding, uh, adding to density in, uh, core area two. Was, um, recommended in the Affordable Housing Plan. Last year as well as in the recently approved, um. Plan of Conservation and Development, so. Again, the town is, you know, we, the staff have been working with Newport. Um, and there is this, you know, Community Challenge Grant application, we felt that the direction, policy direction. Was supportive of, you know, uh, again, a modest increase in density and, and in this project. And that's asked for here, but that was supported by, um, the Plan of Conservation Development and the Affordable Housing Plan. The Community Challenge Grant has three components. This, um, the ten units is one, and you know, of course. We're hopeful that it's going to also support the, you know, our, our senior housing, affordable senior housing goal. In the, um. In the Affordable Housing Plan and P O C D, uh, because the units are first floor. And, and we think that that is also having the two bedroom units. We know that that's, those are very popular at places like Stonebridge. And the like, and, um, so. That is supportive, uh, you know, of, of that goal as well. But there are two, you know, there are two other elements, the Community Challenge Grant, we were able to, you know, kind of combine. Project elements, so one is, um, we got some funds to make an improvement to. Excuse me, build a swell. Across the, uh, build a bridge across a swell at the rear, uh, the Newport Center. Uh, and that, and make some improvements where we've been working, excuse me. We've been working for a number of years to create, try to create open space access at the rear there. Uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission, when they approved the project for C I L way back when. Uh, provided for a stone duck, stone dust path at the rear of the parking lot. That would provide access, again, the bridge needs to be done, but we've been working cooperative also, cooperatively also with the fire department. And the Land Trust, which has a, a, a conservation, he's been along the, along the, uh, Metaverse River, so. This grant, you know, provides some funding to, uh, uh, kind of help us accomplish that, that we've been working on for a number of years. The other aspect of this grant is that we were able to get some funding for the, um. Uh, Board of Education's Transition Academy, which supports students that, you know, need additional. Support in transition to, uh, adult life, um, you know, primarily between the age. Of eighteen and when they age out of the system, and, um, this is, um. This program is run out of the Y M C A building on Main Street. And as part of this grant, we were able to, uh, secure over four hundred thousand dollars to help. Make additional improvements to the Transition Academy to. Better serve that population, so it is a multifaceted program, obviously. We knew that, um, this, uh, project proposal is contingent on the zoning and that, on the zoning text amendment. And that stated in our application clearly, but, um, you know, it is part of what we need to. Move all these pieces forward. Be happy to answer any questions.
Um, just a quick question, um, yes, true. So did I hear there were two grants that have been approved for monies to help us? Is that what I heard in total?
No, that's, um, it's one grant, it's, um, in the vicinity of one point six million dollars. And, you know, it, it has money for. To support this, um, you know, affordable housing piece, and obviously with, with Newport. Constructing it with state, uh, assistance, it will have all, uh, you know. Prevailing wage requirements, affirmative action requirements for the, for the, for a construction project of this nature. Uh, and then the other two grant elements are the, um, the, uh, trail improvements in the bridge. To access the open space area at the rear of, of, of Newport Center. And then the, um, the improvements to the Y M C A building, which is leased for the Berlin. Uh, Board of Education's Transition Academy, so it's all one grant but three elements.
If I may, the three elements, and I know Jim probably just may be, but it's like, it's the. Um, and hope he deals that person, but they say grant covers is all in this area. So it's probably Kensington overlay area. And so they're interrelated, and the grant has a bunch of, three different elements to it.
Yeah, and we're, you know, we. Thought that, y- you know, revitalizing and improving every piece of property in, uh. In the, you know, uh, core area in, uh, Kensington Village area is important, everything. You know, complements, one, one project complements, complements another and builds on. The progress and success, so, uh, and as Maureen said, these. These grant elements are all in close proximity. So, you know, the, this, the state was able to fund it as a, as a package.
So then, um, if I give, I know back track to where Tony was asking why I was distracted with the audio. Um, I wanted to point out that. The Affordable Housing Plan Committee and during the, the discussions for the Affordable Housing Plan. As well as through the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, Plan of Conservation and Development Committee. The conversations have arisen and have been integrated into both those plans. That with the expectation that the Kensington overlay core two, Kensington Village Court area two would be. The possibility of increased density, and it's actually a recommendation. And let me look at page five, the staff report where, uh, I talk about consistency of it. I updated that to twenty thirteen and twenty twenty three, twenty. Three, three Plan of Conservation and Development, sorry. Year, but, um, in housing section strategy five. Number three, we, um, states in the housing strategy and implementation. To revise the Kensington Village Core Two regulations to allow increased residential density was an affordable requirement. And or consider restricting, redistricting the area across from the train station to Farmington Avenue Core Area One. So yes, what this proposal does is if. There is an affordability element, it increases the allowed density by one unit. So it's currently, it's an excuse per acre. Um, and if the applicant. Has an affordability component, it allows seven units per acre, and so that's six units per acre. As long as it has the affordable, and then, um. The Economic Development Strategy talks about review of zoning regulations to ensure that regulations support. About desirable land uses and site design and provide opportunities for housing development. Without displacing commercial uses and to. Staff analysis is that this proposed regulation does appear to come in, to be responsive to that. As this actually requires that the commercial uses are behind, and the residential use on the ground floor is behind commercial uses. And given what we've seen in the last several years with commercial uses, um. They're not as successful without that frontage, and we are getting, um. The number of inquiries to have other types of things happen at properties. That are behind the, the commercial use, commercial uses. Need the frontage on the street for success. So this doesn't, the regulation as proposed does not seem to be contrary to that at all. And their action two in that thing, strategy eight, um, increase the allowed residential density in Kensington. Bill, Village Court area two, and refers back to the housing section, which I already ran, so. As you know, it was in, it's been anticipated, and, and that's in from the twenty twenty three. Twenty to twenty thirty three, P O C D, that was just.
So at this point, from. At this point from your mission. Are there any questions in public to the public regarding this proposal? Yes, sir. I'd actually, to the general to the rear, and then I'll get to you next, how about that?
George Milk, George Miller, twelve thirty one Orchard Road. Just for, everybody knows I was the chair of the Affordable Housing Committee that, that original report. I, I'm not speaking for against this, personally, I, I think it's a good idea, I just want to make a couple of comments. We talk about the need for senior housing, so when you look at affordable house, we have to look at there are degrees of affordable housing. Eighty percent of the upper threshold, it's the max allowed, still allowed to be called affordable housing, it still results in pretty. High rents for a large part, uh, much higher than most of our seniors can afford. When you look at some of the other affordable complexes like Monty Moore, Sage Pond, or whatever. They have leveled at thirty percent, sixty percent, and eighty percent affordable, what we really, really, really need is thirty, sixty percent affordable. Okay, so just so you know, eight, eighty helps because we have that need too, but it probably helps more young urban, new starters, whatever. Coming into play, not so much seniors, um, they really need sixty percent type of that, type of, uh, support. Um, the other thing is just, as, as you start thinking about it, we mentioned ten percent, twenty percent, you know, two. Twenty percent affordable, ten percent affordable, ten percent affordable just keeps us on an even keel, we make no progress when it's at ten percent. It really has to be at least twenty percent, you know, two units for every ten, if somebody comes in with a proposal, oh, I'm going to have ten percent affordable, eighty percent. That's not really helping us, it's keeping us where we were, you know, it's, it's not in, increasing our percentage of our goal towards affordable. So you really need to get a little bit more than, than just ten percent affordable, thank you.
Thank you, is there, um, and Mr. Raj?
Thank you very much, Chris Edge, two forty Kensington Road. Uh, yes, we work very closely with the applicant, the Board of Appeal, the Y M C A. The Land Trust and the Fire Department on putting this grant together. Uh, it was one of the most creative ones that I think we've ever done as a town because the. Way the state set it up is I needed to be such a huge amount of investment to make it work, and Newport was able to put together something that makes sense in the area. Uh, we, both the town staff and other folks are working with Newport Multi Group, open eight forty eight Farmington Avenue. Uh, which is more of a state copy of the Will Steel Center for over five years, as you can see, that'd be quite a bit of investment. I think the tax amendment itself stepped in the right direction with the core area two, which is essentially across the street from where the existing Steel Center Development is. Everybody that's not sure where this is, it's the other side of the street. It's the Jerry Queen side of the street. Allowed density currently makes any mixed use largely unfinanceable because of construction, materials, and strengths and other factors. Though it allows residential in the first quarter, seventy five percent back, totally, and early closes the road to the commercials, which is important, I'll need to keep that commercial going. I am supportive of this tax amendment as additional multifamily to the train station, a great way to bring additional professionals to the area as well as provide restaurants, retail. Server providers and call attendants and help additional customers. And I think one of the things we've seen that we've been working on is to make Farmington Avenue a lot more walkable. I think this definitely can help in that way to again support house, have visiting coffee, have dairy, and pizza and others. Um, and I'm excited about the idea of units potentially where on the first floor where seniors can live, but I think it is important because that would be the biggest needs. I think this is something that makes sense, and I know we've had a good partner in Newport.
Is there anyone else here in the public?
Uh, yeah, I just want to, uh, comment two cents for it then, uh, we're all, really all above reasons that I, I heard this evening and have, uh, looked at. Coming here tonight, I think it's a, uh, a great addition to our downtown, it's, uh, kind of thing we're looking for to. Add some more, uh, units there, some of them, uh, are going to be affordable, which is certainly a bonus for us, I think, but. Get to that ten percent if we can, I know it's an elusive number, um. That state puts on us, but it does give us a little bit more flexibility to reach that point. But I think although in the, in the plan that we're looking at for downtown, at the Steel Center. And, uh, Kensington Village developing as it has been, I think it, it's going to make for, uh, much more, uh, robust, uh. Area down there with the restaurants that are coming in and expected to. And also for the project to, to help the Y M C A traditional get to, which is very important. That we kept, keep that there, and it's a, a great addition for, um, our school system as well, with the folks that have graduated out but still need. Additional help, uh, as they, uh, afford in life, so a lot of positives, um. From my perspective, uh, I don't see, uh, any negatives, so. Throw my suggestions and, uh, support the best me, so thank you all.
Anyone else? Uh, anyone in Dillon Land, which is kind of a staff location? Okay, they're not coming back to the wish, Laurie. As I have things to add, I just did want to, to the record, um. Talk to the second. Part of the tax amendment, which is the affordability guidelines, we basically, the application is striking the language that's there now. Did it in, when it's setting, we did this, since of the regulations, this. Aligns very closely with. The provisions of the. Of having it, the units be compliant with the counting towards the ten percent hold. Or the threshold rather, and also put in the intent of the section to be compliant with. The ten percent, you know, the fully comfortable. You'll recall, a number of years ago, some of the language in the regulations, uh. Didn't need the standards for the, to count.
Didn't need the standards for the to count for this. Trying incrementally to the language all come up the date. So that's why this is. Was added to the. Sorry, I think that's it. Alright. Anyone else wish to ask a question? Um, okay, oh, sorry, that's okay. You know, the need, um, and my questions were Tony. Yeah. So just as a review, because I was trying to take it all in and make notes, so I didn't forget, but um. You were focusing a little bit on seniors, so that senior is being because it's on brown floor accessibility, is that how you identify it is?
Correct, and also location.
Location to be accessible to the town. It has.
On a bus line.
Oh.
Which is helpful. Now, you're shopping close by, so we we think you definitely can feel.
Okay. So that's alright, you could make a circle back. Okay.
Uh, I uh, I think the affordability. Uh, should be down to seventy percent. Now, one thirty, but that's twenty percent of median income.
Oh, okay.
Uh. Instead of eighty percent, uh, it does. Uh, give a little bit more affordability to the units. Uh. Like as the they said, eighty percent of median income is a lot of money. Uh, on a roll and eighty thousand dollars, I think it is out there.
I think it's about eighty thousand.
The average is hundred and four, I think, in. So uh. Something with eighty. You would. Uh, but. So I think that the minimum incomes also go down to seventy percent. Uh. And that's the bit on the diet in here. Uh, put in two. I also were looking here at the list of properties qualifying right now. Uh. I question the property that are. Qualified right now because of the river behind it. Okay, and the wetlands, stuff like that. Uh. If they really could put in there. Well, they're gonna while I think it was doing this kind of thing, the property. Of uh. People rode in. Brickyard Lane. Actually, uh.
Old Brickyard?
Old Brickyard Lane, yeah. Uh, all of the property behind there or behind this project that we were talking about. Uh, should be in the the uh. Affordability thing, because there's a lot of property in the. The steel company does. Uh, go out, which. Uh, they're not building no more rural bridges anymore, steel bridges. Uh, so uh, I think it's an opportunity to expand the affordability and the housing. Uh, to the center of town. With that said, I would think that people rode. And. At the end of, the beginning of Old Brickyard. Uh. Both the, right now, a lot of, but. Uh, that area should be covered. And that also. Property space in the roads. Should have the same seventy five foot setback where uh, commercial uh, first floors, and that's the the residential. So those those streets are not. In on this. And uh, there's a lot of rocky acreage back there. Uh, so go do this. Uh. The only be perfectly now, uh. Perfect time to have this in the brick and road. There have to be a consolidation of properties in order to get that one acre. Or Main Street. Or or Wolf's Park. Uh, Center Park, and that will have to be. Bunch of properties sold together. Or make the project. Uh, so that I think it's a good availability tool as to do this further out. Get that affordable. Right now. It's uh, seventy percent, sixty percent. Uh, so we should at least get that the same. Uh, that will. Give us more viability of our affordable house.
What are the southern questions here?
May I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
If we're focused on core areas two, with the dark tax of that.
Yeah.
So it's not not a plot, not applicable to Steel Center properties, properties like that, correct?
So. The core area two is. Really limited. The. I have a map. Well, this is the thing, as you mentioned, the. So it it is not, it goes. A couple of properties to the east of Steel Boulevard. It's on the south side of Farmington Avenue in proximity to. Across from um, the new development. And then goes over to. The. Main Street. And it's uh, going up to the Confucian section of. Those streets that watch through the Blue Brick Road and Farmington. And. Um, this is the. Zoning map, which is also online for anyone. And yeah, my speaker's not on. There we go. Um, it's at the bottom of the zoning map, so I'll just pass that down. If you can see the core area is this this map. Maybe doing is a little is, doesn't have a a big. The northern map for the core one, which extends to the newest building that. Um, Newport is building next to Steel Boulevard, Core One, which is peach colored. Goes just a couple of degrees east as well, but then the light gray is the core two. The uh, the gray next to the railroad is substantially railroad. That's the railroad corner. Pull up on that. Coming off the map. I ever wanted to.
Maybe just one more clarity on the actually the one that we were granted. This was our our second try to bring, they they take a lot of work to get done by the town and and by, thank you, Jimmy, what he says, the police together. I bring this specific to five units at eight forty eight Farmington Avenue at eighty percent of median income. So the the brands had customized to that particular project and. Sign market, my suggestion, I'm certain saying you can correct that.
That's fine.
We 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 agree, we need more affordable housing. And Mark and I, my business partner, Newport Realty Group, we don't like saying no to anything, but this particular grant does kind of box us in. The five units, eighty percent of median income. Is is how the financials are based on this development. Anything left in that? From the business perspective, fortunately, this doesn't doesn't work for us.
So are the, excuse me, so are the remaining units that market that?
There'll be five units that be marketed, yes.
How how far are these units from the railroad tracks?
The the rear of the units will abut the uh, the firm between our property and the and the tracks.
So the train itself. When the train goes past this development is literally going to be feet. How many feet do you think are?
We uh, the 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 website at eight forty eight Farmington is going to line up that way along with. Back at these proposed apartments. And I think there's one, two, three, four apartments that actually back up at the same distance and um. On that property now, three years or four years, and no issue with the train. If anything, it's kind of a cool and exciting noise. I don't live there, but.
These will literally be right.
Just like the other building.
If you can for one second, yes, because then we'll pull that off the. The concept and and I want to remind the data that. So just to remember. But this is the core area two. This is the Kensington Village. With the. On the form twice is the Kensington Village. They check. And you go to the north side of Armington Avenue, you see where Depot Road is and to the east. Is the core one where the new development is going in. This map does have the added. Um. Section that they added to Core One, and then Core Two is all that other peach color around it. Um, the village. Redevelopment zone is along Harding, at the Harding Street, and that has a different. Another set of regulations. Um, the core area two is those properties that have the peach color, I'm calling it peach, and everybody might not be aware of it. And hash marks that. So it may be this way. And as opposed to the orange line, that'll be the core one, just so that everybody had the sense of what the properties are and. Around it. Just so, just so I make sure everyone understands, can you just, can you take the mouse and just sort of draw, draw what we're talking about? Yeah, we got a tiny mouse there. We do, and then often, and then like I said, it goes north of Farmington Avenue up. Into the railroad property, but that property is all railroad land. Yeah. Yeah, although it does include. The um. We're having a not done a much, um, the breweries. Yeah, the brewery there, and the other industrial building there, that's the whole two. Um, the listing of the properties I listed, we went strictly on what's over acre. Because of the requirement that it be all acre, we just particularly just one one properties that are an acre, we didn't deal with whether or not they had weapons or. Any other physical constraints within one zone, one way, I didn't look at it as. Just listing like those. Just. And then. And you go back and then just to, if you're done with this, we'll go back and go back to the. Yeah. This day. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew what we're talking about. Forget to your, okay, so the training.
Do you think that chair was early? It's seven, ten, main street, but well. Um, basically, when we come in, we'll be coming in for a site that rule of this uh, text take just get uh, approved. The buildings right now are going to be approximately between forty and fifty feet from the tracks itself. And our plan will have to put some uh, bump rates. Of pine tree or some sort of trees behind the units to help out. That would be part of our proposal to come in for site then.
Um. All question. Why, if the if if the current tax amendment allows for six year olds. Why are we going to set up?
Basically, the density factor for going the affordable is what you do to get the additional units for the affordable components. We have twenty percent that we're proposing uh, is too affordable, so that's helped out with the planning of the development. It's like so still in the same.
Okay, um. Originally, uh, uh, the Mr. Tony, Mr. Tony was giving his presentation. Um, you said that fifty percent were going to be for affordable for seniors. And it looks age restricted. Or did I mishear your?
It's not restricted in any way other than. We think it'll be appealing seniors because of the first floor living access to bus station or or bus lane. It's a no, there's there's no other restrictions other than the restriction that'll be in the property for. Yes, fifty percent, fifty percent will be eighty percent.
So, so it's not going to be targeted towards seniors. Well. I mean, seniors may apply, but not, we we, it's not like we can say this is our senior. Okay. Uh, Brian?
How long are you going to need it affordable?
The. They, it's it's.
Uh, June? Uh, we just went through kind of a mapping, wanna visit that. Tim raised a question about on the river and wetlands. Is that still included in the? Locations and that.
The the, let that we. Got. Probably they. Well. But the rivers. Yeah, all but. Uh, but. My question now.
Well, no, I I just, I just wanted to see if we could alleviate that as a concern. I didn't have. The different approvals of the town. That we ran this through had no comments. Would they have raised questions if there wasn't the river, so what? Crazy. Um, those would definitely be site specific. So. That could be specific site, then it would be the. Would be raised, but the develop, the develop. So we just pulled this. And. So you can see the blue river along. The bottom of the core area and touches it. And. Um, and there are considerable flood zone within the, any of that downtown area, really. It covers a lot of them, so um, so there are. Lots of there are um, environmental restrictions with regards to that. But maybe not as well as.
Yeah, this one last comment, I'm gonna, I'm gonna um, also say that. For some reason, I can't think of any. And I was, but in forty to fifty feet, and there is a comprehensive piece. I gained over living there. At least a good eight years. I was actually looking forward to this, so I know it sounds. People that don't live there. Testifying, but. Um, it's hard to understand that that could be possibility that it is like we're listening to the train compass.
And to highlight that, tho- those are. The train noise are some of the first few questions we get. If and when are we doing that turnover of an apartment at eight forty eight Farmington Avenue? And be sure with them, there's sixteen stops a day. Eight northbound and eight southbound. The trains either decelerating, stopping at the train station, or it's just starting to accelerate, leave the train station, so we don't have. Um. For a number of trains cruising by at thirty or forty or twenty mile an hour. Once in a while, they will perform for whatever reason. Um, but we appreciate your comments, and we've heard those same comments from our residential tenants.
I think locally, what we did as a town in Illinois was that we worked with the train station or the train to not to the bar. That is so many miles of the of the stop, just so that it was considered of any residents, not just.
Thank you for that.
Okay, uh, Tim, did you have something?
Yeah. They are the both is the overlay zone uh, core two. Uh, I agree with you on that again, uh. But uh, there's no reason that we can think about expanding the core of core two zone. To like the the Steel Place or or the Garrett Old Brick Lane. Uh. And with that said, I also. Do think. That the medium income should be reduced. Uh. And how, if the project does eighty percent. Or is that eighty percent? That's probably a. A decision from this condition. Uh, now if it's in the zone. We accept the 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 goal, eighty eighty percent. Uh. No, but uh. I understand the outfit saying that the. Wouldn't be feasible to build. Seventy percent. Uh, of course, occasionally, you don't have to us yet. Uh. But uh, I think the overlay. Don't can be expanded. And uh, that's something maybe we should do, seeing that we have a tax on that going on.
Well, I I don't think we want to make it part of this. I think we want to.
No, this is, and then it's expanded later on.
Maybe in the future, but there's there's concerns that come with expanding it. And uh, uh, but I'll I'll get it back into that later. Um, I I, if I can just go back and revisit this community challenge grant, just so I have a better understanding. Hope you don't mind just indulge me. Um, originally, when, um, I believe it was Mr. Mahoney, may have been testifying today. I was trying to write down some bullet points, but one of them was for senior.
I was trying to write down some bullet points, but one of them was for senior housing, senior door living. It was uh, again, the access for the bridge across the square. Center was a benefit, and, and then it came up a couple of times, the transitional academy is, is part of the grant. And then they would benefit from this one point six million dollar grant. Um, and that it would uh benefit to the general about four hundred thousand dollars to help them with the Y on Main Street. That was one of the benefits, and also the trail improvement, I think is the other thing that was stated was part of it. I, I guess, I'm. When we say it's going to be a transitional academy, just agree, it's going to be part of this grant. Is this housing that are going to be directed to or for the folks with this transitional academy? I mean, I'm trying to.
I think Jim may. But, but they're, they are three independent components.
Yeah.
We're, we're speaking really to one of the components. Which are the ten units, with, with five of the ten being affordable, have one. Independent part of that grant, and I don't want to speak to the components, those, those aren't. That Mark and I have driven, maybe Jim can, can clarify though.
May, maybe I'll ask Mr. Mahoney to clarify, I'm just. I, I'm trying to figure out what this grant is, is this a. I, I'm trying to weigh the benefit of the town to the benefit of. The uh, transition academy. So, kind of help me out with this.
Sure, it's the, yeah, a- as Tony said, it's not. Not housing for the transition academy. The improvements to the transition academy building. You know, the, it's, it's for their, that's a programmatic building. Before, you know, the, the YMCA building on, on Main Street. And, you know, they provide day, you know, day services, transportation to their clients, Cromwell also. Uh, participates in the transition academy. So this would be improvements to that building to make it better suited to. To the users. Uh, the, to the Berlin, you know, Berlin Board of Ed, and, and we work, you know, we work closely with the Board of Ed and their architect. Um, and. I identified the things that they thought were priorities, improvements to the building that would make it. More suited to that purpose, and um, and that's what we applied for.
Uh, Mr. Mahoney, then is the improvement to the buildings, the, the Y that's on Main Street, or are we talking about the? The spaces being utilized at McGee School?
No, the, the Y on Main Street. The, the work, yeah, the, the improvements that are made to uh McGee and Hubbard School. Those were all improvements that were paid for by the Y. Um, and then putting, putting the daycare um services, excuse me, into those buildings. Um, so, those are kind of indirectly related to the grant because. You know, obviously the Y can, now that um, you know, they've got the daycare facilities in the, in the schools. Which is a great place for them, they can, you know, make the long-term commitment to the Board of Education for the Transition Academy. For the Main Street building, but it's indirect. So that, those aren't directly, you know, part of. Receiving grant funds, um, the work at the schools. As I said, they're paid for by the YMCA.
Okay, um, any question, the train. We're talking about the trails that. We talked about, um, uh, my notes says here. A bridge across a squail. At Newport Center was part of.
You can correct me if I'm wrong on any aspect of it, but it's um, the. Um, when Newport Center was approved and, and. Lot lines were revised and there were improvements to that. Property for Newport Center, which is the property we're talking about. This, the concept land being on the, there's connectivity to get down to the river. And ultimately to form trails, so that's the. We was configured and there's easement to allow for access. And so, grant money would help. See that to fruition.
Well, thank you for that, thank you. I think that's the questions I have, permission? If we go back to public, anyone else do, which is to comment on this application? Uh, yes, sir, to the back. Yeah.
Right here, Shrice.
Come on down, cause I need your name and address of the partners, please, thank you. Oh yeah, make sure you use the microphone, you're going to have to lean on that one.
My name is Aaron Edelson, and I live at one oh three Child Street in New Britain. I grew up in Berlin, um, my uncle Ronald Edelson, I believe, was on the zoning board a while back before he passed. And um, I'm actually a member of the Berlin Land Trust right now, so you know, still an active member of the community. Um, I recently purchased some properties that are in the CCD two. Um, zoning area, and it's also within the Kensington overlay area. Um, I heard, I currently bought the property, the raw land next to Dairy Queen on Farmington Ave. And then also the, the two unit building on the corner of Farmington Ave, New Britain Road. And then the four unit building that's next to Bank of America, New Britain Road. Um, so I'm really here just to kind of. Just to learn, and really I know that the town is developing this area, um, and. I recently hired a civil engineer, um, to kind of come up with some site plans. And I'd like to, in the future, make an application, you know, for you guys, so. Any tax amendments that they're asking for, really, it seems like it would be beneficial for me in the future. Um, and so really, I'm, I'm just an introduction here, um, that, that's really my only comment, so.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Ed.
Ironically enough, I was actually going to mention that I've had a formal discussion with one other property owner. In, informal with the second operator in the area, so there are a couple of other things that are immediate. Potentially we develop opportunities in that area, so this is important to. Be taking a step because. They are looking at what they can do with it, and I think the, the corner that Sir Edelson had mentioned is a. The major corners, we all know. Since he's purchased it, the vacant lot is. Better looking, um, long-term opportunities are there, and against the increased density that help consider. Have talked to folks about the area, I think there is interest, so just gonna add that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, question, any other question?
I heard that the part of the grant thing was uh. Also concerning the fire department, I didn't work about that part of the grant.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, the fire department's involved because they own some of the land that the, the trails are going to be in the back. And um. You know, we've worked with the, the fire department, Mr. Pajers, the chief. There, you know, actually is, is Tim, you may know. The fire department itself, you know, um, I think it was Mr. Corby had uh done some trail work back there. But, you know, they, they don't want to have access for the public through. Their parking lot, so we had worked it out again with CIL a long time ago, to provide this alternate access from eight forty eight. And so, you know, we're working closely with the fire department, they would provide, you know, um. Uh, act, public access easement as part of this transaction. And you may also know that the um. The town recently um repaved the parking lot. For the Kensington Fire Department. So, um, and that's another investment that the town had made in this area that helped. To leverage the grant funds, so we work again closely with the fire department uh on both of those elements.
Yeah, please.
Although the grant is an important component of what we're speaking about tonight. We, we don't want to have our, our intent tonight was the zone change, so we didn't want to grant the kind of cloudy discussion. Although the grant is important to the town in terms of economic development and other pieces of the grant, we just have the commission to. You know, um. Share their intent on our request for the text amendment. Maybe not focus so much on the grant. Although, although very important to us, without due respect, but they were a presentation, he wants to pay you the grant.
And, and you know.
It's a priority of the clouding of the issue.
Well, no, and I, I don't, I didn't mean to, but because it was part of the, the presentation. But I, I really had to know. I, I think what. Is that, for me, with this text amendment, I look at there, there are seven properties that are listed here that also have the ability to be increased in density, so. If the commission were to be look favorably and go ahead with the increase. The problem then becomes is that it can affect these other properties, now, like, you might say it's a great thing. But I look at Farmington Avenue now and the traffic load that we have on it. And I look at the disrenderings, we really don't have anything else, but assuming that everyone has the cars. In this, in this uh proposal that is eventually going to come down the bike. But if you did increase it, and we, and we look favorably on the ten minutes they're hoping to get. We're looking at basically twenty bars. It could be twenty bars. I mean, everyone has a car, they're all going in different directions. But then I look at, there's seven other properties that may be impacted by this, by the decision, so now I'm thinking seven times. You have, uh, you have two by seven, fourteen, so you, you, you just keep going with the traffic and. Farmington Avenue, the way it is right now is extremely busy load, and you have not yet constructed. The two biggest parts of, of your development. With those units. And so, as I am trying to look forward, I'm trying to figure out the traffic load. Cause it can be very difficult and very frustrating, and this is not. This is not a. This is a concern that I have, so I'm just sharing it with you. There's a lot of traffic on Farmington Avenue, Starbucks hasn't opened yet, you haven't done the housing yet. Then we have this proposal, we have other possible proposals. And I just want the commission to think about that too. Between the traffic and parking, which is now an issue. I had a chance to go to the hop house and there's no place to park, and I know I'm probably. Parking illegally in front of a dumpster, but there was no place else for me to go in. And so I see this as a. A swirling little tornado that we have that's growing in the center of town. And I think we all have to put on our thinking caps to try and figure out how best to resolve it. Well, that is my concern when we're even doing the bump up of the one unit. I said, I'm thinking, I'm just. I may be complicating the problem instead of helping process the nation. So I'm trying to, I'm going like this.
I know there's a traffic study that was completed. Before, I think there's updates as we began to do steel center, steel center development. I don't have the draft of study. Was actually engaged with by the town, so maybe for review, that would be most appropriate. I think that explained, and I think it may, I think it may also. Regardless of.
Yeah. I think it, anyone else?
Yeah, I remember when we were doing the P O C D, there were one of the things that we were considering when looking at this area was, um. Our density goal would be. Buildable acreage, so not just, I'm saying, you know, six or seven units per acre, but, you know, if half of those acreage. It's wetlands and unbuildable, it wouldn't apply. I wonder if that's something we could consider here that might alleviate for that traffic concern, considering, um. How much of that land does have, you know, flooding and what?
Well, yeah, that, that's.
Sorry to revisit, um, in the apartments. I don't recall how many were two bedroom, how many were single bedroom, I think there was a mixture.
For the ten units, they, they're all.
Corey, the question of course, I don't know. It's a special part, is the site plan, if the uh text amendment goes through, does it? Or is. All right, okay, all right, no, no. And, uh, Dylan. Jim Mahoney, yes, Jim.
Thank you, I, I was, you know, I, I, I know most of the commission members are familiar, but for everybody. Just to put a perspective on this, the core area one density is twenty-six units per acre. And the core area two density right now is six, and this proposal is to move it to seven. So, you know, I, I, it's pretty incremental. So I think if you're gonna, you know, think about standards on usable acres and such. You know, we'd have to recalculate the, the numbers, I, uh, but you know, there's quite a difference between the twenty-six across the street. And the six or seven in the core area two.
I agree, I just don't want to complicate a problem. I, I think that the town feels a little bit of a pressure. With uh, what we have right now, which is good growth, and we want it to be good growth. But I don't want to deter people from coming into town, I want to make sure that we have ample parking for them.
Jim, one last thing? Yeah, I, and I, I. I hear a lot of the concerns, I think. As we look at these proposals that we need to look at, again, what are our causes of town, it looks like there's been a lot of work. In planning and searching for what can we do, how can we do that with grants and applications and so forth. So although, there's a lot of traffic as a concern. Or we're also gaining. You know, a lot of, of. People that live close by, seniors to want to enter on location. Um, train access for people that are community, um, so there's a lot of benefits, although it will be a little more adjusted. I don't always see that as a negative, I guess.
I am concerned about the traffic flow that's going on in Farmington Avenue right now. Um, I know people who live in those new apartments that are very unhappy at this point, they. Made numerous complaints to the town, saying that people at Hop House are parking in their, their parking spots. There's no markings anywhere for these people who are paying a monthly rent. That they can even park close to where they live. They have to either park out in the back, people are parking over in Madison, which means they are now crossing Farmington Avenue. Where there's even more traffic coming back and forth. Um, traffic is a concern here. People are unhappy about where they can park in their apartments. There is other businesses around Hop House where people are having a hard time parking to go to their hair appointments. Um, dog grooming. Um, not everybody wants to park, and I'm not even sure how. Madison feels about people parking in his parking lot, because that's his property. Same thing with Dollar General, people are parking over there. So, the, the traffic is a concern, parking is a concern. We have another restaurant that's going to be opening up behind those apartments. We don't even know what type of traffic they're going to be bringing in and where they. So. This, this is not something to be ignored or just sugarcoated over, this is a concern, it's going to get. Heavier traffic, the more we build up the center, and I understand that's coming, but we need to do it at a, a pace. And in a size that works.
All right, thank you. Well, I think we've taken in a lot of.
Think I may have been able to answer some of the, um, some of the comments. Mark and I are very active in our business, very active, very hands-on in our business. I can count on one hand. The complaints that we've received for not having a parking department at, at Steel Center. Granted, we're tight right now, we're parking, we realize, we recognize that, we've taken steps to address that, not just for our residential tenants. But also for our commercial tenants. Opened up some parking that we didn't have available before. We've communicated with all of our tenants, our plans of action, through the parking. And any other traffic flows, for example, Penn Steel is just about done. There, that, we're proud to say, started that building, uh, tax day, April fifteenth, we'll start taking tenants. Right around the middle of September or so. That will add another fifty or so parking spaces immediately to that, to that, to that center. And then we're going to move back fifty-five Steel Boulevard. Just going to be another abundant parking places, so we realize that it's been a phased approach, and there is some tight, tight, tight timelines at times of parking. But we've addressed that with all of our tenants, we wish that we have more feedback, if there wasn't any place we could address them. But we've addressed that with all of our tenants. We wish that we have more feedback. If there wasn't any place we could address them. Very, very important, the portability group, to make sure our tenants are happily satisfied. Mayor Mark had one call to me on a Friday afternoon about a tenant that wasn't happy. Right away, I got on the phone with that tenant to address their concerns. Very, very important to us. Very important to us.
It's very important to this commission that this well, let's succeed.
We're part of the team. We have a lot of investment market in that. We want to make sure we continue to do the right thing. And if there's deficiencies. That we're not aware of, I'm going to be surprised we're not aware of those deficiencies, but if there is, he may be aware of it. We're we're partners with the county. So.
Yeah, Chair, this has to press that. Um, I think some of the complaints came into Maureen's office. Because I have been into Maureen telling her about some people. Start feel the lot, the lot of that table falls that I don't care. So it's somewhere in the office.
And unfortunately, we can't assign parking spaces because we don't own the land area. It's owned by the Boulevard is owned by the town. And there's not enough space. So we so we can't assign spaces on both on the Boulevard side of development. The the rear or the west side of the dome. There's not enough space there to assign all the apartment tenants to where it's fair and equitable to those to those tenants. So our our communication is from the D M F making application. There is no sign parking places. But here's our plans going forward. And we're very proud to say we hit all of our timelines. So as we add. As we committed to additional parking spaces, we planned for our commercial customers. And our visitors and our residential apartment apartment tenants. We we commit to a plan and we execute that plan. So I'm really surprised to hear. Granted, there's probably a couple of key times. She went there on Friday, went to the hot house on a Friday night, nine o'clock. It's a busy site, but there's always action coming in. I know. Mark, Mark is there more than I am on the weekend. He's cruising around. I'm cruising around to make sure, you know, we we provide a lot of parking. Those tenants pay us rent. And part of our delivery to them is to provide them space, safe spaces, well, lit spaces and parking space. So, yeah, if if there is issues, Mayor Mark was was pretty tall me on a Friday afternoon. And it was one of our one of our residential tenants and she got a conversation with her. You know, she was comforted comforted by the fact of how we're going to handle the parking going forward.
I'm glad to hear that.
I just had to make sure because Mark and I think a lot of pride in that business. I want to make sure that we're clear on that.
Yes. So if you do about within the duty of the provisions of the potential supply zone for an interest development. And pretty much in the entirety. It is still in CCD. So it's about. Provisions. Um, the uh. Other thing I wanted to point out to reiterate is that. Uh, with regards to the text amendment and any future development proposals, they would be subject to. Plan zoning commissions you give for the site plan analysis as well as. Reading the parking requirements as in regulations are subject to the commission. Waiving or providing for provisions for modifications to the parking requirements. But. In the Steel Center development, with the Boulevard, those those parking requirements were evaluated for the. The buildings and uses that were going on those parcels. Street. But for any future development, of course, you would be evaluated each proposal on its. It's on there. Yes, thank you for that.
So we took in a lot of tests on it. I know we're going to talk about a traffic study. Um, do you have a? That was done in Farmington Avenue.
I'm sure it's a more I afforded the the Steel Boulevard project.
Yeah, this morning, just uh, my understanding of what you just said that. That that parking isn't really concerned as much of the text amendment. Now, it's something that we will address later. Specifics. So I think that's only the the determination on how density affect. In the overall. It is an increasing destiny. Any provisions with the regulations for bike and development. And in each zone, like help with those parameters and the plans on.
Improvement, improvement on each thing. Although those would be part of this whole. Number of parking spaces. They they are only required to provide the number of parking spaces that the regulations call for. However, there are also provisions to. Hurt fair parking and redact. Analyzing and getting some in spread these certain. Also, just to if I. The commission that would. Advise. Yes, different advice. Minor modifications to the regulation that is proposed. This is a proposal and from an. Modifications to it. For you to make final modifications or. Should you choose to practice to do such, but major modifications would have to be uh would be something you would certainly want to read.
I think that's probably the one modification maybe we can add is the time which the income normal. Uh, under or globally aspect. Which right now is at what speeding. I would want to adjust that down to seven.
And we'd like to. Do whether that of that has even a fact on the. My Jim may have responses to whether. Changing the affordability would affect. What's been done already. So. You still could be.
Yeah.
For the grant, for the grant.
Maybe. So he's all yeah, so.
Just to say that, yeah, as Tony indicated, the underwriting of the grant application was based on the fifty percent of the units at eighty percent of median. So um, you know, that could be an issue. With relation to the feasibility of the project going forward. Um. Again, it's up to the the commission's discretion, but. I would add that. And obviously, you know, we're, the regulation itself, they're talking about twenty percent affordable. And the proposal, which would be involved with a challenge grant is fifty percent. So it is a, you know, high bar in terms of the percentage of affordable units that would be part of development.
Okay. So.
Um, yeah, I wouldn't mind seeing a quick study if you. Maureen, if you could, um before our next meeting, to show what the overall impact of the total units that this. Text amendment uh could produce for all of these listed um properties. That's something we could. You know, we could really.
We probably don't do surveys on all the properties, but we can.
We can find out.
I should be able to partner it up. And we have the mapping, you know, but they're remain happy. They're not. Survey next necessarily. But we have a good, I think, there is some map now to give us.
Wanting to continue. And for Logan and second by Mr. Jersey for the discussion was favored by the president of someone, okay? And that will be continued on to the next video, which will be obvious. All right. Moving on, we have the application of nineteen oh six. Balance. He was switched. Okay, applications of nineteen oh six. The Connecticut general statutes eight thirty affordable housing. We have item A. Zone amendment to create. Eleven. He he planned residential. Item B two should be application to the site plan approval book from fifty two. Unit multi-family residential community, which is a leased group apartments. One in nineteen oh six. And twenty one dash blue loss one sixteen one seven nineteen thirty four. Men is wanting one dash two block one. And zero Berlin thirty five, which is now twenty one dash two block one fifteen lot eight day. And here we are. Okay. How you feeling today?
Good evening, Madam Chairwoman. Town Planner Tuesday Assistant Town Planner of the Left. Tony Paula, Pauline Metz. For the record, my name is Chris Smith. And Lynn is currently the long term Walter Pearson. And I agree with you, the statements we have, the owner applicant of nineteen oh six. Uh, Berlin L one C. A couple of housekeeping matters, if I may. I understand the the notice letters uh were sent out. And um. We have provided, I believe, Town Planner Tuesday with those as well as photographs, the posthumous signs. I would like to, I know we've, it's taken a while to get here, uh, last meeting, and I would appreciate you reconsidering. Uh, the the seat. Of this application, another one relative to your. Sound is regularized, only regulation oratory. And accept this application. So if you go forward, I would, since it is, it is part of this uh. Application and process, I would respectfully request that all that material, including the letters, motions. A meeting, a video transcripts concerning the initial moratorium issue being incorporated into the record of this matter, which I think there already is, but I'm just. Making a note of that for the record. Uh, the other question or point that I have for the commission request. It's uh, this is a two part application as uh we spelled it out, yeah, summary letter. Uh, there's a text amendment, as you're aware, there's a site plan. They do go hand in hand because they're they've been filed under. Showing some provisions of section eight dash thirty G of the Connecticut general statutes or state support the housing act. And I would respectfully request that we have one public hearing on both that, you know, for both the application. We will request the text amendment first. And then we will address the site. But they do overlap because text amendment is an eight thirty G because of the site plan application and vice versa. So uh, if if it could have that, the hearings fine. It's a record keeping. And again, uh, we have every intention, we will address this uh don't text amendment first, and then we will go into the site development proposal. But there's a lot of overlap and it voids being. Having to do everything that I do for the text amendment the second time with the site plan. Uh, so that it's consistent in one record. This I really not want to do. I haven't had anybody not do that, but but I I was told to bring that up with the commission to the outset. I plan to do it anyway. So I just wanted to explain why I'm asked.
Um, so uh, Tony Smith did raise this for the record, and this is generally full of the missions council. Um, Tony Smith did raise this with myself and and with the town planner. We advised him that it has been the commission's path practice not to combine the. Applications. Um, so I think probably the most recent. One that you had, um, you did not do that. And I I recollect a number of few years that that I've advised you that you have not combined. I think um, one of the reasons for that, and certainly Maureen can share that as well, is um, the confusion of the public. Um, you know, sort of being unfamiliar with the differences in the applications. Um, and and thus, for example, making site comments or comments are more writ to the development plan itself. Um, in in the text amendment portion and being very confused. Um, so that's something that. Experienced and, you know, we told, of course, Attorney Smith that we needed to address it, address this request to you because ultimately it is your decision. Um, but we did share with you that, you know, that has not been the so this commission.
Yeah, I'd like to just add that um, one of the this past winter's applications. Um, I think that was, look, it was not all that long ago where you. Didn't allow test to want to get. Combined afterwards, you made the comment to stop that he would prefer. Applications combined because it was a big fusion as well as money. Um, passed to development. We just briefly heard that.
But sorry if I wronged a particular caller of that. If for some reason the commission um does not look favorably on the text amendment, then of course there would be no reason to visit a site plan. Application.
Well, well, they are two separate application. Um, I don't let attorneys bet. I know I know what his response is going to be. So why don't you hear from him on on that issue?
I'll do it quick.
Okay.
Little little notice again, uh. Little notice uh. That sixteen seventy six for a turnpike. It's in sixteen seventies. They've done sixteen eighty eight for a turnpike according to plan. Again, it's not legal.
I'm gonna try this. But the parcel is identified that it's actually not this application. That's the, that's um. At the application E that has the include the property at sixteen seventy six, but six fixes the official of. It's the official address of the parcel itself. There is a second building on the left that has a different. Being but it's the official address. The property is sixteen seventy six. The property's um occasion D, which is the one that is currently being opened is. Nineteen oh six, zero and nineteen thirty four. The zero because there is no man.
Okay.
Because sixteen seventy six.
The the. And I think it's good for for the record for everyone to understand how the addresses are. Notice that aside. We want to make the legal requirements to do.
Which my question is.
Oh, the. It is the legal numbers.
They got the legal numbers.
Okay, correct. Let's begin. Let's begin, yes.
So. Attorney to.
We'll have to decide whether we want to do that.
So. Oh, well.
Comply with.
Oh, okay, we have to decide with the head, I thought.
In in the reason why I I bring that up, and Chairwoman, the commission, and I think it's important to understand, which I do. Think I have an obligation to explain it, supported by presentation at the outset. Is that this is a section, it's an, it's an eight thirty G application, I don't know how many you've had recently with with social action. Uh, there's a different standard of review and. Let your town attorney elaborate as your town attorney sees that. But it is a standard review that's applied to both of the applications. Respectfully, Smith has mentioned. That your standard legislative discretion for text amendment submitted under. A section eight thirty G does not apply, standard is whether it's the decision by the. Were to buy it, this is. I'm getting ahead of myself a little bit, but uh if the commission denies an application under eight thirty G. Or if the commission approves it with onerous conditions, it's not feasible, the development not feasible, like reducing the buildings by half or something. Uh, have one of those cases. All right, for the moment, uh. Then the burden is on the commission to establish record, they have to justify your file and and standard. Uh, for the court, and whether there's a component, the application. That results in adverse impact with substantial public interest. But that clearly outweighs the portable housing for the town. Which all modifications to the plan maybe uh can be, can occur uh to to address that. Adverse impact, though it's not your standard. Uh, zone text amendment application might be just for. For zone change, where the, what the standard is, is consistent uh with the purposes in section eight dash two. Uh, is it consistent with your plan of conservation and development, your portable house plan, if that's applicable? And will it result in adverse impact uh to public health safety under eight dash two, also is it consistent with your, it's called the. Your comprehensive plan, which is, as you're aware, there's, there's only regulations on that. That would be a typical zone text application, if I was in front of you with that, and this wasn't an eight thirty G, if it doesn't, didn't have any G on it. So the regulation says anything under that has to be eight thirty G, uh similar to eight thirty G. Site plan is that that's the standard, so it's really the same standard, um, and for that reason, I would. I would ask to. Uh, keep that combined, it's it's not separate, where the text will be one standard. And the site plan special permit application uh would be another administrative uh standard versus legislative that you have. So it's it's your discretion, it's your call. But I just set the outset respectfully asking. You'll see, it will be specifically text first. Uh, even though it's not required for eight thirty G, that just explained, we'll we'll address the uh. The components housing system with your P O C A's and your portable housing. But uh, yeah, that's that's why I requested, and then it keeps the record uh clear uh going forward, so again, it's same standard. And it saves me from having to do something twice for both applications. And maybe there's a way for us to incorporate that. But uh, yeah, I I knew we take a little time on this, to be honest, but it's important. And I've done this in other towns. But uh, but again, we've had a combined hearing because it's an eight thirty G, if it wasn't an eight thirty G, you said, hey. Chris, the text amendment first, like this gentleman who's doing, Valentino, Valencia, I apologize, because the person, the application in front. For us, and if he had filed a site plan or a special permit application at the same time, expect they do it separately. I did learn to build an application, but again, it's an eight thirty G application. I know your town attorney has had an experience uh with the board, I just uh shared a case uh with attorney, uh Paula. Uh, the judge Herger, who. Playing these stock interests retired. That said, no, standard review for zone text amendment that I did in Fairfield case, and now I have a parent. It's uh standard C eight thirty G, stand town on appeal said. Have legislative discretion against the, this is an eight thirty G application, eight thirty G says you file a zoning application. That complies with eight thirty G, it's eight thirty G. So I'm not here in front of you with a, a text amendment that's uh. It's an eight thirty G text. The audience, but that's, that's the purpose of it, hair related, and the text, I have to demonstrate that this file relative to your G application, which is. Site plan application. So, but again, the presentation, we break it down. And if you wanted to comment, text them, and I think it's, you know, there's more than welcome to, I. Talk about discretion that you may or may not have, I believe this text could be an eight thirty G application if we're going through a process, but. Uh, anyways. That's it, thank you, Madam Chairwoman.
That's why I couldn't, because you've heard them before from me, um, attorney Smith alluded to a case that I had, um, I think it's about ten years old now. Um, his, his is a, is a much younger place. Um, and uh, it was Lexington Properties versus R. D. and planning and zoning commission case, um, I think the majority of you that. Sound real best of, um, will recall that, uh, because I did distribute it at that time, um, counsel in that case didn't agree, um. That uh, there is a hybrid standard, and that's what that case stands for, so we do disagree, um, interestingly enough, um, attorney, attorney Smith did indicate, I'm sorry. That's why I should better not laugh. Well, laughter, but um, uh, attorney Smith did indicate that he's going to draft you about how the the testament that they're proposing is. Um, in compliance uh with uh your comprehensive plan and such. I think that you just did say that, Chris, your P O C D as well, um, so you're going to hear that from it, but, you know, we'll, we'll, uh, I think we need to give it away, it is nine oh three. Um, so I don't want to burden you with that, uh, I think what we can certainly do is provide you with with the respective cases of why we're taking the positions that we are. Right on this issue, um, but certainly, um, you know, you need, you know, to us everything and and when you, I think we, there is a decision. Um, with the commission, um, when it, when it comes time uh before the closing of the public hearing with all the most. Yeah, so, Steve, thank you.
All right, so I have a question now, do we want to combine them, or do we want to keep the text ones? Yeah, I think it's just, that's just the way we roll. And that's the way we're, so we're going to keep this stack, but. Please proceed.
Thank you for the prior consideration, your commission, and collectively, and folks decide, so, but thank you for the important time. Uh, to address you. Uh, on behalf of the team, do you have a powerpoint? That about halfway through, we'll go to the site, as we'll just say, that portion will be a site plan. And um, I know we. Um, pulling up, so I may just have. Hot screen, maybe go to the second screen would be great, thank you. Wish I could do it. If you can go to the. Light inch, everybody, the team, uh, the commission, the public, uh, here to see the professional staff. The app, the app within nineteen oh six. Berlin LLC, that's Patrick Snow, who I noticed since before the commission before with. At the least one other proposal. Our engineers are Zubik Inc., we have Daniel Bill, who will be hearing from. A short while professional engineer, and also working on this has been uh Grazer Walsh uh from Zubik. Our traffic engineer at F T, F A Hesketh, and new host is Scott Hesketh, and he's a traffic engineer, we'll be hearing him. A little later with site development proposal. Our planning consultant, uh, Brian Miller, A I C P of the Plur Plan Group, unfortunately. Cannot be here this evening, uh, I'm going to be the designated hitter, and we'll walk through his uh topic story. Uh, that he has for the commission into the slide presentation that I'll be doing, then uh myself, running my team. As legal counsel. Provide you with the uh overview of the proposal. Uh, it is, it's a two-part application, and we're having a public hearing as to each one separately, uh, which is your decision, it's fine. Uh, in that regard, so it's two-party application in support of a proposal for a fifty-two unit residential community. Be located on real property known as nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike inside the little lot of order, because I just identified the site. Uh, the aspect is a short while, but maybe if we can just go to the next slide. On the rave initiative, so there's the property nineteen oh six. And again, Dan and Bill are professional material, go back to this, this presentation, but not just because they're in this order as already. And the proposal, again, is fifty-two year residential community, um, going to possibly go to next level. That's what it'll look like on the site, again, just to build back to that, and uh, just the, you know, one more slide. It's. Patient purposes, uh, with the nearest other residential use, large one is the Regency Townhouse Complex is located. Well, uh, a little more than half a mile, point six, tens of miles away. And then if we can go to the next slide, that would be great, thank you, please. So again, the uh, community is proposed to be located on nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike. Uh, there are three properties as town planner, just indicated nineteen oh six, nineteen thirty four, and then one that. Uh, is, doesn't have street numbers referred, it's unnumbered, but all the uh appropriate lot block and uh. Map numbers were provided in the legal notice, are provided in the notice for the agenda. The community will provide for a housing opportunity or workforce housing component. Specifically, thirty percent of the fifty-two units or sixteen units will be Brexit. Also, our families have the eight. Sixty percent median income level, and they will be deed restricted for a period of forty years, now those, that's the baseline. For a section eight dash thirty G application, you have to uh meet those requirements, and and half of the. Portable units will be at eighty percent, half will be at sixty percent, I just. We'll go through that a little uh more in uh with what would be Mr. Miller's presentation. And uh, Dylan, please, if you can just go to the next slide, and then we'll just stay on this for a while. So again, the proposal involves a two-part application versus some text amendment, we're going to trust now with this vote hearing. And the proposal is to create a new plan residential in build development, inclusionary multi-family residential use. With a housing opportunity or workforce housing component, this will be added as a new section. Eleven double E of the zoning regulations of your town, your, your zoning regulations. It provides for the proposed residential community as a permitted use subject to site plan review and approval. And then the second component is an application for site plan that we'll be addressing at the uh second public hearing. Uh, this evening, that seeks approval for the proposed fifty-two year residential community consistently the provisions of the text and, and as you'll hear. Uh, later, uh, the text amendment has been drafted to fit the site plan development. Yeah, so we'll get back to that as we go through this presentation. Format of our present, uh, format of the presentation will be as follows. Uh, first, uh, we will address the text that we'll. Site and application. We're going to have our A I C P planner, uh, Brian Miller. And I, we're going to walk you through the text and provide an overview of the proposal, including the affordable component as provided by section eight dash thirty G. And then after that, we'll go to the second part of the public hearing, or the second public hearing dealing with the second part of the application. For the site uh plan application, at that point, we'll hear from the end bill, concerning the civil engineering components of the site development proposal. And from our traffic engineer, Scott Hesketh. As to the zone text amendment, I did submit, we have three documents that you have that I'm going to be referring to in this presentation. Uh, the first bit is my cover letter uh to the commission dated April twenty seven. Twenty twenty uh, twenty twenty three. That text amendment looks like this should have. And the third is the affordability plan uh that um, that Mr. Miller had prepared, I did not prepare that. In referring to the uh summary letter that we submitted stated again, April twenty seven, twenty twenty three. I'll just uh provide a summary of the letter. For the record. Again, the. Proposal involves a multi-family residential community development, or sets uh by section eight dash thirty G. On subject property nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike, which is uh comprises approximately two point four acres. Uh, Mr. Bill will cover some of this again in the uh site development proposal, but we're keeping everything separate. And it's located within the Berlin Turnpike one zone, uh, district, BT one, as provided by your regulations in your domain. Uh, the property currently has a motel located on nineteen oh six Berlin Turnpike. And two single-family residences located on nineteen thirty four Berlin Turnpike. Just going to kind of summarize this letter, take you through, again, the residential community will comprise fifty-three units. Twenty-six of the units will be one bedroom, half of them. Twenty-six or half of the units will be two bedroom. There are eighty-seven parking spaces provided on site. They propose to be rental units. There's an onsite driveway system with associated parking and access to Berlin Turnpike. The community's internal driveway and onsite parking will be uh private, we'll hear more about the stormwater systems. Uh, later for Mr. Bill during the uh site plan application. And the traffic from Mr. Hesketh, so skip over that. It be a summary letter at this point. Uh, the property, and one of the requirements of the text amendment is that the property have access to sewer in the riz, and uh, existing access to it, and is adequate capacity, because the proposal that we. That before you, and relative to the. Work forces that would require a wetland permit, Mr. Chalder, let that up, is. Uh, is reported, should be reported, and we will be providing you. The records, and they're already, uh, with a report from a soil scientist, well, so Mr. Ian Cole, uh, confirming. That there are not wetlands awarded, which is associated with the site development of the property. Going through the text amendment, again, eight thirty G. So the proposal provides a housing opportunity component, this is right for the text amendment at the moment. Uh, specifically thirty percent of the total number of units or sixteen will qualify for portable housing. Again, half of those units are eight, will be at the eighty percent median income. Half of those units uh are eight units will be at the sixty percent. And uh, as we're walking through this in a moment, but the final price is target. Families with incomes, and this is how the regulation is drafted. Appropriate to many of the victims or sigma, commission or sigma, I'll make reference to this. With the uh eighty thousand dollars. Calculated the number of eighty percent, and that's. Think you win the prize, because that's uh just about right there, we'll do that a little while, in a little while. Uh, but you'll see that many of Berlin's uniform board of employees will qualify for the eighty percent. Um, in income level. And there'll be deed restricted covenants, I think that Mr. Chalder already asked for a sample, we will get you a sample of a deed restriction. Uh, so that's in the record, uh, and a affordability plan has to be filed, and again, we did file that, it was prepared by Mr. Miller. Uh, okay, I'm Miller consulting through. The town of Berlin, as you know, would be ten percent of it, you're close, you're at eight point eight. But you're not there, so that enables this application to come in. Uh, under eight thirty G, and hopefully if the commission receives it. We can add points and percentages. For you uh relative to achieving that ten percent mark. Uh, what I'd like to do now is just. Quickly walk you through the uh zone text amendment. And that's this document here, I will. I'll do it in a summary fashion, I'm not kind of going to be line, line by line, but more than happy to respond to any questions that you may have concerning it. Uh, we did uh submit the draft initially with the application back in April, uh, it was revised as of May, twenty twenty three. And I'll just spend a little bit of time in the uh intent purpose, so again, this would be a new section, uh, double E to your. Section eleven of your uh zoning regulations, and it's entitled plan residential in build development. Inclusionary multi-family residential use for the housing opportunity, workforce housing component. Uh, in the first section, double E one, ten purposes, uh, to multi-family dwelling units are permitted on certain properties. Located along the Berlin Turnpike or Route fifteen. To promote the adaptive reuse redevelopment of underperforming properties subject to the provisions of the statute of your section. And affordable is specifically referenced as. Qualifying as affordable under section eight thirty G, so. Qualifying as affordable under section eight thirty G. So unless somebody has an eight thirty G application. Under this application. And if they wanted to do their own text amendment with their own proposal, they certainly will be able to that statute. Under subsection A, one of the purposes is to increase the availability of affordable and tangible rental or for sale workforce. dwellings in Berlin. Where there's existing and adequate over facilities and services, including sewer water. Associated with the proposal, which also has to be located on the Berlin Turnpike or Route fifteen. B and C and D talk about promoting housing choice, economic diversity. Providing promoting housing for those with the economic means of. Outer low income households and mixed use development and mixed income development, excuse me. In close proximity to public modes of transportation and group fifteen. And the efficient utilization of infrastructure. Along Route fifteen to promote neighborhood planning by providing a diversity of housing. Density sizes, prices and an adaptive reuse. Infill redevelopment for. Again, adaptive reuse approach. Forbidden uses, I'll just highlight just summarize these multi panel and dwellings and accessory related accessory buildings. We have minimum site requirements that are provided for in section double E three. We have a. Section double E four, both area dimensional coverage requirements. Just below that and five other standards governing private driveways, parking. Density signage. Subsection E is site plan zoning compliance document is required to be submitted. Traffic study can be requested. We did file one with with this application. Application requirements. And essentially. This provision is that if there's a provision in your zoning regulations. Would apply to this, we're not an eight thirty G or even if it is an eight thirty G. That the standards that apply even whether. They're applicable and could be a basis for denial with the eight thirty G standard. So that they would have to be as long as what's proposed. Let's say parking doesn't be the parking requirement as long as. Whatever's proposed consistently eight thirty G meaning that it doesn't create a result in adverse impact with substantial public interest. Then it's. Then it's permitted. It also deals with the same section stormwater quality of control. I think of your ours applies. And it's consistent with the two thousand fourteen, the annual. And your town regulations. Does provide that a separate excavation permit is not required, but anything that only need silver. With a separate excavation permit as to addressed. With an application spitting under this text amendment, which again would be a site plan application. And then in nine and ten, I think it's important. Just seems so. We're talking about confusion, but I just want to make it clear that those provisions are in there to make it abundantly clear that. Any application filed under the section has to be eight thirty G compliant. And if you go down to double E ten. It does provide dwellings, the workforce housing and mixed income dwellings is what they refer to with the text amendment. They have to be comparable to the market rates. They shall be evenly dispersed throughout the. Community and there shall be an affordable affordability plans fitted with it. That provision, subsection D of that section is that. The the town retains, which I think we do anyways, but it's it's worthwhile to put it in text amendment. So. Any enforcement authority that you have already. Under section eight twelve, we can again expand before of course, any of the provisions of this. Text amendment, if indeed in residential community were to be not. So that's the text amendment. The affordability plan again. Mr. Miller, of course, I was able to make it see. I will go through what would have been part of the presentation. I sense that we're close to hearing tonight. We continue. And that's what we're planning. You know that Mr. Cholder or Planometrics quickly and diligently did get a report out. Early forward, so we could take a look at that. They will be providing a response to that before the next hearing so that we can get that over to Mr. Cholder. Relative to the different points that we raised in there. I mean, you can admit that the outset, not to say the following though, relative to that, but. There is a recommendation, Mr. Cholder, and I think I can let Mike speak for himself. He does his his report. It's summary for the mission. He recommends going beyond the forty year time period. My client is not a physician, won't be able to do that. What's required under section eight thirty G is that the portable unit has to be deed restricted. Or the community for a period of not less than forty years. So that's that's what that's what we provide for. And that's what we'll we'll be saying. Also, just wanted to clarify another point that was made that make this clear. In the affordability plan, and this was a very good point that was raised to Mr. Cholder when for every three units. That are constructed. There has to be an affordable. I usually have that in my affordability time. You know, he had done his fifty two up for this application. The calculations that we we will use will be the ones that are utilized under eight thirty G. And the state of Connecticut actually through the Department of Housing has under their regulations. That apply for eight thirty G have a formula and that's what will be utilized. That's my understanding. That's what Mr. Miller utilized for the sample portability plan. But it was a reference to using different types of matrix. But we'll be utilizing what's required. By the state that may be amended going forward. And that my client will be administering plan. He has some. Housing units in another town that he does monitoring, provides annual reports as you go to our DOH, who's DC big. So H. That you know, the O H Department of Housing. He is qualified. I've done a few of these applications and have never been to a recommendation or question that. Yeah, that is that the commission has the authority. Before discretion to reject the administrative. That's my opinion. That's really up to the whoever's the owner is, developer. They have an appropriate administrator. It has to be annual reports that are submitted. To the commission or your designated agent, whether that might be a housing authority here in town. And and to demonstrate that there's compliance on a annual basis, mostly such one year year anyways. But that's typically what we could do. So. I I just wanted to bring those up, Mr. Cholder, out of the box as opposed to waiting for. So sort of kind of important points that were raised and they're very good ones and I and it's not typical. To have those questions best of an application. So if I, what I'd like to do now is I'm going to wear my Brian Miller cap and I would just like to walk through. Some of the components in this affordability plan and then touch upon some of the components in your portable, your portable housing plan. And you're recently re adopted in your old one. In thirteen, you have to do. Again, I always, I always catch, even though it's not required in my opinion under eight thirty G. I still like to point out the consistence. But. So we'll let the next slide. So the affordability plan, the schedule A, the designation of housing opportunity or mixed income units. I know one of the recommendations. Of Mr. Cholder is that we identified which units at the outset. Will be qualified as as portable and we will do that and get that to you before the next. Continue hearing, since this is a new continuing hearing. Again, the total number of units, market rate, thirty thirty six market rate units. And it'll be sixteen affordable units or mixed income units for a total of fifty two. By bedroom count. Will have one. There'll be twenty six one bedrooms of the twenty six one bedrooms, eighteen. Will be market rate. Eight will be mixed income or affordable. And and half of those will be at eighty percent, half will be at sixty. And then we'll have twenty six, two bedrooms, again, six split. Eighteen market rate, thirteen mixed income. And the something that I. So automatic, but when you have the. Units have to be dispersed not only evenly throughout the community. But they also have to be done on a. Programmed basis, both with your piping and when they're being constructed. Should get one quarterly to reach the market rate so that we're sure you get your one third. And also with the bedroom types, so if you have different unit mixes, I've been involved where there's maybe. Eight or nine different types of unit types and for. Trees, tubes and ones and you have to kind of break it down. So in this case, it's simple, the ones and twos. And so half of the affordability sets twos for. Will be at eighty or will be at sixty. So let's see, we'll just make it all sixty the ones for vice versa. So we just wanted to make that clear. The next slide, please. That would be great. Thank you. So this is from the affordability plan and again. Mr. Miller would be doing this, but we do have the twenty twenty two median family income with the state. And as Commissioner Zigma indicated, the maximum income levels and rental levels for affordable units if you slide down second. Table on the slide is the two bedrooms at sixty percent. The maximum income would be approximately sixty thousand dollar. At two bedrooms at eighty percent. They would be approximately, would be approximately eighty one thousand dollars. And what I, what Mr. Miller did, and I always think this is for. To do for the commission and for the public of eight thirty G application. Is to take that number eighty eighty percent and just compare it to the. Public information online concerning the particular towns. Municipal employee salaries who qualifies for what they're being paid at. And also for the folks working at the board again. So what Mr. Miller did, oh, I'm sorry. Is he did go and he can explain this for detail at the continued hearing if you have any questions. But he did go through budgets and hold off the various positions for these. Results with qualifying done and we just go just on the next one quickly. We'll make this part of the record, obviously. But you can see that there's quite a few. Individuals who would qualify and then the last one would be great.
Is it my imagination or is the print getting smaller?
Well, we'll we'll get this to you and email it to you so you can look through. And again, Brian, Mr. Miller would have been. Better to walk you through each one of these and he he can at the continued hearing if you have any questions, but we'll have that. We can email that in tomorrow. It's more ready to get that to you so you can go through it. And then what I'd like to do next is briefly touch upon this reporting.
I already made a note that you might want to power point and did. Or if you guys can make, we can get them to us. That would be even better.
That's it. Okay, so to kind of round off the text. Go to the next slide and just go through the text excerpts from your affordability plans. Your portable housing plan that you adopted in twenty nineteen, I think you were ahead of the curve with legislature as required in. The town throughout the state. And and I'm not, this is this is very small print. Sure, I mean, it's made, but I was just touching on a couple of the points there. Going to the housing media assessment. And I think this is probably all that sense. Folks, probably all of you, right, participating, drafting your affordability plan. Your portable housing plan. Not sure if Mr. Cholder participated in that or not. But I think this is very typical throughout state of Connecticut. We all know this. The demand for. A moderate low income housing for individuals in Kansas or state, especially the multi family. But under the housing pages nine and ten. You do provide in the plan. That there's a, you identify that there's a need for affordable rental housings and for live. Some surprising numbers here. I don't think everybody. Has read through it or aware of it, but approximately forty one percent of rental households. Addition to approximately sixteen percent of owners of households stated. Are in less than fifty percent of the area median income. Going to the last line there, these households often experience housing instability. Rely on housing assistance, typically spend more housing percentage of the overall income in firing of households. You have a few numbers in here in your plan that address that. For plans in there for the goals and strategies, that surprisingly, increased housing, long, very low, moderate seniors. Plan goal is to achieve the development of additional affordable housing. To get you above the ten percent. Requirement of the ten percent list that is maintained by the Department of Housing the state. And then dropping down to your P O C D. Now, this is from twenty thirteen. Mr. Miller picked some comments from there and you can see the system with what you have is twenty. Twenty three and what's being proposed. This is from page four dash twenty eight of the twenty thirteen P O C day. Number two, even with the rental progress to the north of the turnpike. Even with the rental retail progress to the north. Most significant development along the Berlin Turnpike in the past decade has been residential along the south side. It's residential development transformed this area. An area of scattered marginal commercial uses into a growing vibrant neighborhood. And I think you know better than I do. I mean, I've driven up and down the Berlin Turnpike, just kind of lived in Berlin. Old hotel and all the properties there, driving range. I used to go there all the time and unfortunately closed. It's never helped my golf game anyways, but this is what if you're talking about hearing your your P O C D. Dylan, if you please go to the next slide. So housing cost burden, this is, I believe, and it is, it's a thirty percent. This is what everybody uses throughout the state. So. If you use more than thirty percent of your income. For housing, that's considered to be a cost burden to that individual or that family. And it states here, the housing cost burden is experienced by. More renter households in Berlin. At least your findings, your report, your plan. In Berlin, forty seven percent. The owners of households were a twenty one percent. A severe cost burden. And there's the graph. It's also more common among renter households than among. Owns owners, owners of households. So renters tend to be in a higher cost burden category in your town's dead. Then no sense on properties. And again, you've already in your plan, your P O C D as well as your housing affordability plan. Housing plan indicate the need for more rentals and multifamily town. And Dylan, if you can go to the, oh, the next slide is actually duplicate of one that we just did. So we'll skip over that. And we'll go to the one hill. There we go. And Brian, Mr. Miller would probably be best to explain this, it looks like. This distribution of different housing types here in town. And I'll just read the last line. Quote, these housing types range considerably from market rate apartments to age restricted apartments. To mixed income housing condos and planned unit developments. And you can see some of the development in the southern portion. Of fifteen, which is where this site development is posed. And Dylan, if you could just please, I just want to go to the next slide, which is my last slide. It's this is from your, some of the. Some of the commentary and findings and goals. Recommendations from your two thousand twenty three, twenty twenty three P O C update draft. How's it go allow for, you just did this, but I'm just reading for the record to the public. Allow for a wide selection of housing choice that enables residents to build in the state, similar life attracts the presence. How thematic is the need to provide more housing choices. Particularly for seniors who wish to remain world. Seniors related prior application for both pension members as well as the applicant. Going to the next, the page thirty four, I'll just read the last line there and that excerpt. Recent multi family rental development approvals and permits may help mitigate this pressure, but affordability. Still be kind of. Full housing out of your plan. For one, I'll just read that one strategy. Number one is implement recommendations of the twenty twenty two. Affordable housing plan and take other measures necessary to increase the supply and range of affordable housing in Berlin. Maintain in a portable housing inventory in excess of existing supply. Now, trying to break this into. The two hearings, as I've been asked to do. What I'd like to respectfully point out to the commission that I respectfully. Uh, respectfully spent, I know we're going to be coming back uh, at your next meeting, Mr. Miller can respond to any specific questions relative to his. Uh, findings and his affordability, but he can address that in more detail to your hearing. But I respectfully spent that the uh, the text amendment. Which is geared and only applies to, you know, using the application, high school. I respectfully spent as assistant. With uh, goals and standards provided by section eight dash thirty G. If you want to apply traditional uh, standard of review for the commission with a non eight thirty G. Uh, text amendment is own change. I respectfully spent. That this text amendment is consistently eight dash two. The general statute, which is now under goals in there, set of towns and tax regulations. Uh, to promote housing opportunities uh, here. Uh, in our state, near a particular town, uh, that's the first problem of, of the standard test. Uh, that is consistent with your rights, in particular, section eleven, the special regulations E B. Uh, that you adopted. I understand that there's, that's been. Proposal to change that possibly or eliminate it, but. I do respect, uh, respectfully spend that it's consistent with that and with the other provisions, regulations that you have throughout the town. Uh, to promote higher density. And uh, zone areas or along major arterial roadways such as uh, you have downtown. And along uh, the Berlin Turnpike. And I respectfully submit it's consistent with your uh, housing plan, your affordable housing plan. As well as your P O C D, both twenty thirteen and recently adopted one twenty twenty three. And conclude well, and I respectfully spent that it meets the last part of the standard uh, test uh. For a uh, non acre G uh, zone text amendment in this case. And then it doesn't result in that risk path uh, to the public agency. But that's kind of the typical standard. Non acre G standard, I respectfully submit this question that. Text amendment, uh, as to does satisfy both of those standards. So that does conclude our presentation on some text amendment. I understand it will be continued appearing. And again, uh, we will be providing just response to Cholter's comments. Relative to the text amendment and also his comments to the affordability. But again, we submitted in conjunction of. Both the text amendment as well as the uh. So again, thank you for your time. That if you respond to any questions that you have.
Questions, permission. Uh, you mentioned the. Length this forty years, but you won't be going beyond the forty years. I guess I didn't quite understand why it was limited to forty. Cause that was one of our considerations, I think, of the town. That we can extend that to maintain ten percent of requirements of the state. Share that information.
Questions? Something wrong? More than was required, as the statute, what's required under the statute is that. Uh, the portable units dwellings uh, be be restricted for a period of forty years. So for example, this community. Uh, we have to provide uh, thirty percent sixteen units in any given time would have to be uh, affordable. Uh, it typically happens, uh, experience with bias uh, over the years. Uh, is that uh, if a tenant uh, suddenly. Has an increase in salary or whatever, uh, and doesn't qualify. There's two options, um, one, I've never heard a commission say this is a good option. One is to ask that tenant to leave. Because they don't qualify. Uh, the other is that they can stay. But the next unit that comes available on the next market, it comes available on market. Within that community that has to replace that before the, whether it was an eighty percent affordable unit, two bedroom one. Or it was a one or two bedroom, sixty percent. But if the restriction runs on the property. Decating, in this case, thirty years. That's where it's provided under the text thirty years. Of the total number of restricted activity rented or sold. Visuals and panels that solidify those levels, which are dictated by that. Go to ask, I think uh, we should try and respond to uh, I think a suggestion uh, that was made. That is that uh. Do it or we could just use itself every forty years and again. Um, like I am, it's not a position to be able to do that. But you can't do it for forty years because that's what's required. That makes sense. Why are you explaining the main inspiration we all got to respond to this question?
Yeah. The other question, someone. Will all these users be strictly rental or is there options to buy?
At the moment, everything may be rental. I did put in a letter that they, they could be referred to uh, for sale. I think they put as a title as well, but it's just known as, every faction has. For rental. I think it was more my suggestion uh, to add that in some of the other. He reads it out, I guess, so I was just do that typically uh, for all the applications. I haven't had a for sale in thirty G. A few years, last six, seven years, I've maybe done two or three.
Thank you, Tim.
Yes, I'm uh. The projects of post the. The honor to workforce uh, regulations. Uh, cause then. So that means they will be financed, they have to be built.
Oh, I know, uh. That's a good question. That's one of the reasons I usually, I asked them. Somebody preparing you to do the. Budget comparison to show what qualifies. Uh, this will not be, uh, this won't be funded. An option under eight thirty G is have funded house and could qualify. This is not a, my client is not seeking any type of. Uh, state or federal funding for this and the tenants, I don't have to qualify for any type of. Housing rebates or funding or subsidies from any government authority. They just have to. Uh, meet the uh, the income requirements and other requirements that are provided in the affordability plan to qualify. Generate information, that is, that they do not make more than the eighty percent. That's what they apply for, for one of those.
Housing of workforce housing component. Yeah, uh, so. The two units that work for, for housing. Which will qualify as per. Eight thirty G or a uh. Or uh, this is.
Uh, that's very good question and I'll clarify that. This question is asked. I happen to use, and many other um, housing folks do, I've worked the, the term workforce. Uh, housing opportunity, O H U, you've seen in some towns, I don't. But it's, it's very throughout the state. What you call it, but this, this housing uh, in the text amendment. Applies to the community, as it spells out right there in the first paragraph, that it has to be persistent. First section here. Ask the cloud agents. That she needs thirty percent of the. To be qualified as important. An applicant could do more if they so chose, chose, but qualify under eight thirty in Connecticut. Thirty percent. That's how that, that's the draft. Sorry for.
Are the, the, the space and the text. And uh, it goes that workforce housing component in there and it can be. Uh. Fire the uh, workforce house. Uh. That's one of the options.
So, so I think, I think uh, Jennifer, with the confusion that come within because. The town does have a definition of work for housing, from the regulation, it's section eleven B B. Those choose needed.
If, if whatever term the commission. Was utilized. We could certainly substitute that into the text amendment, but clear intent. Text the month. That thirty percent of the units of any community that's proposed under the texting. Has to qualify as sort of orderable as defined under eight thirty G. In town, many towns, well, it's something different than order. And uh, whatever you, you prefer to call it, we can certainly uh, be modified to. That's easy. So whatever works, comfortable with, you saw it. So fit to approve it, uh, certainly I can be in addition and then be changed to reflect that.
They have, they have my name?
Yes.
Eleven B B. The case. Is entitled workforce housing development, W H D. And you know, we have several projects that were approved under the. Uh, workforce housing development regulation, the definition, let's put up the definitions. Housing development, a multi-family housing development that qualifies as yeah. Quote assistant housing and quote development as defined in Connecticut general, that is section eight thirty G A. Do use the workforce housing, I mean, the regulations. And. They are also using the same term. In the proposed regulations.
Anyone else? Yes, I was looking at the um, vocabulary and the dimensional coverage requirements um, else. As is written. And as we stated, um, one of the big concerns is public health. Decades, we really take, or they've noticed on. Mental and emotional health. And when I look at these setbacks and you talk about Berlin turn by a lot of the land. Um, surrounding a lot of these properties, the industrial, so we don't know. Well, we don't know how it's going to be developed, it's going to be your next door neighbor. Uh, so I look at these setbacks, I look at this gross coverage lot. Something that they found is very important for mental health is having green space. Um, so you're not just marching from your car into your room. And when I see the setback of one feet, ten feet, five feet and ninety percent gross lot uh, coverage. Um. I don't see. The necess- uh, the necessary steps of or, you know. Providing for that, you know, public health in that um. Criteria. So that is a big concern of mine.
It's, it's a good question. You know, the application, uh, the site development proposal, which again. This is tailored for. This, this is how it works. Nothing uh, underpanded about it, it's. Tell somebody superior plan. Use this text. I can't tell you the med. Application throughout the state. Over the past twenty five, thirty years, in practice, a little on this that. Uh, forty years, but uh, during that time here, this, this form I do will have to. And again, the standards, uh, you're reviewing the site development proposal, I'm sure. Or the standard would be the eight thirty big standard, I think that would be a consideration for the commission. If you want to give what they, is whatever's being proposed. Comfortable with that, those are the setbacks. About to coverage. That's why the statute set up that. There's a standard that's different. From your typical site plan or special permit application, where you have your. Site plan, special permit criteria, regulations, they're just different than the thirty G. That's, that's why they can help with the statute. So again, the site plan, site development plan. Deal with the second problem here, will deal specifically with the site proposal there. But I, I just uh, in, in responding to that, I think that this uh. It has to be addressed on a case, on case or application by application basis. Um. I know folks in, you know, uh, townhouse and there's zero setback or sidewalk. So uh, it's, there's no drink space for me with that. Understand and appreciate what you're saying, okay? By, by there's that. It's a big difference. But I would just suggest that really, this is done on an application by application basis. For the um. Text amendment. And again, the text amendment is done for one reason, but a couple of reasons. It's done for the site development proposal, which we're not talking about at the moment, but we will in next uh, public hearing. And it's done for two reasons. One is uh, for funding. Lending, so let her know, there's a set of regulations in the town of Berlin. That govern the site development proposal. And we're going to lend money out so that it can be built, funded. And also it makes that uh, two things, from a zoning perspective, that site development. It's compliant, it has a set of regulations that govern. But we can change or go beyond this. Arguably, if it's a section eight thirty G application. You just file a site, submit a site plan on, on the table and say approve it. You don't have, you don't even have to have a formal demo text. Uh, the second Blue Ribbon Commission, one of the things we've been up with, mission came up with was. Require a minimum draft regulations to be submitted. That was once made, so. Long and short of it was the purpose for the regulations. Uh, and uh. I hear what you're saying, but my only response is I'm not here to address this in a universal. Or it's a really only advice. Site development proposal that we have in front of you or another applicable one that might be spent. So I just would respect that. Saying. And um, it's a very good point. I think that judge on case by case based, particularly population indicated. Whether they're running. It's, that's addressed concern of yours, with that specifically upper portion. I've spent a little time in there because that's almost the same. It's a very similar response. So maybe some other questions that I'm going to be concerning some of those. In the text.
If you're, if you're proposing, I mean, you're proposing a text amendment. I mean, we were asked to make a decision on what's before us. And what you're also saying that the text amendment is only going to apply to this. It's so one specific application, which we haven't seen yet and I don't want to see it right now. I want to deal with the text amendment. Cause I have a, a couple of issues I had to raise, and I just want to don't take on what Mr. Rogan said. It says here, the maximum building height is going to be forty five feet, four and a half stories. Think about this. Then you said that the maximum number of anti-family dwellings shall not exceed twelve dwelling units per acre. So. I mean, if, if, if I was just to take this and at the first, I'm thinking, you know, what you're proposing. Through the text amendment is basically a block building. Maybe a couple of them, and maybe. Uh, side setback would maybe be ten feet from each other. But these buildings could go four and a half feet. So I'm just sort of drawing. In my mind, what you're proposing on paper. So that's what we're talking about. Then, I have to come back to a. Two, which is the intent and purpose. Now, the intent and purpose is that it is specifically saying certain properties. It's not telling me which properties are being concerned for this or what you could apply to. But I think you've already said that by saying it's only going to apply to this property. It's not going to apply to anything else. So this certain property is all the way down to one parcel.
Well, I, I just want to clarify.
Yeah, please.
It, it can apply to other properties that qualify. This has been drafted for this particular property, this particular.
So. So then, I, I'm just trying to understand what's here, so I want to. So, the family dwellings are committed on. Certain. One specific property, you say. Then it goes on to talk about uh, affordable housing. And that the section also provides for mixed income residential communities. Along the Berlin Turnpike, and then drops down to four points, A, B, C, and D. And but D talks about efficiency, uh, uh, efficiently. Utilize existing infrastructure along the Berlin time turn by fourth, fifteenth quarter to promote neighborhood. Planning. By providing a diversity of housing density, size, climate. And an adoptive reuse and build development or adoptive reuse. But this goes back to what. Mr. Rogan hit on. It's a, a picturing. According to the regulation, something that's forty five feet tall. According to the regulation, something that's forty five feet tall, ten feet from another building. And but I'm wondering, where is this allowing for any kind of sense? Of promoting neighborhood or sense of community? I mean, I I I come back to this. Is that there's no quality of light that goes regulation, I mean, it's just very dry. And it's almost sterile. It doesn't allow for anything now. You can tell me that the eight thirty G is for affordable housing. And I I I know that, I know that, we've been working with it. And I see our numbers are a little bit higher, closer to the ten percent mark, I know you're saying eight because.
Eight.
Yeah, it eight, eight plus, and the reason you're saying this is because the state changed the rule. The state, when we were doing these affordable housing units. That's that. Hit the two. Well. Communities such as ours who are doing due diligence. And and designing neighborhoods that will fit in with our existing neighborhoods. So that we can be proud of the product, so that people will want to live in Berlin. Because Berlin will provide them with a re- really unique. Life experience. You can take a look at any of the other towns around us. And you can see where they missed the mark. They've overdone it. And that people come into Berlin and they really like Berlin, because we've got a round tree, we've got winding roads. We've got open spaces and they really enjoy it, and that's why they want to be here. Now, eight thirty G, then we have to withdraw its affordability, that's fine. But what, why won't these people in the eight thirty G? Why can't they have some sort of level quality of life? Why do I have to stick them into a four foot, uh a forty five foot building? That's ten feet from the other building. On a parcel of property that basically breaks down to twelve units per acre. Twelve living units per acre. The density just, it it just, it it just sort of strips them. Of any kind of load and quality of life. I I mean, and and that's just some something that just popping out at me as I'm looking through this regulation. Or the proposal they about regulation. All right. Might have to say.
You're coming on, that's it, it changes one, two. It's a death. Will be all by seven eighty.
No, I'm I'm looking at page four, it says. The maximum number of multi-family dwellings should now exceed twelve dwelling units. Or twelve or units for one gross acre.
Submitted a revised revision and.
So I'm not looking at the right. Oh, well, this is what I had.
This was, this was sent in, and so it was part of your, I talked about it, uh. As I realized, emailing my motion with the last step, that was a change to it.
So on July seventh, you're changing your maximum, so the maximum number of multi-family dwelling. Dwellings shall not exceed.
Twenty two.
Twenty two?
Ouch.
Units per acre. Are we still at four and a half stories, or will we go to six? Oh, guys.
Still.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
Did this one do?
No, no, I mean, sorry, I get, I get really.
Looks, what I'm looking at is. A. It's great. Get this popping up?
Weird.
I I have it up, I have it up on the screen, okay, well, this also. This said one point five acres. Eight. Three.
It's still a little bit.
Well, what I thought up here was two seats for the doctor.
No, that was, that was the very, it was redlined, get on to one with that, now in this July version, it is one.
This regulation. The same right like that submitted sixteen steps, this space, so we drafted regulation. New, be fresh, regulation by itself. And then we would just submit the staying application that was covered in the whole of the proposals. Turning things, okay, so this type.
I do. The tax amendment has, you know, one of the standards in a date is no spot. So. Uh there's nothing but spot zone here. Uh with the Bay Bridge, the minimum book, books that, that rears says all this other stuff. Nothing but spot zoning one lot. In the town of Berlin. Uh this doesn't help anyone out in the town of Berlin. Uh. To develop the. Uh that there's a totally unfair. Perspective to this. Uh that one lot can be fifty two units on it. Of an acre and a half. Uh. I don't know how how uh the law of no spot zoning is is uh. Done just because of portable housing. This, this town has been so advanced in affordable housing. Compared to other towns in the states, unbelievable. Or what we're thinking on affordable housing. Okay, uh within six months, we'll be at our ten percent. Uh. You know, it's just. Amazing to me that you can spot zone one piece of property. There's something like this, it it, I don't know how a judge or anyone else would say, okay. Uh you can do this one lot and do it this way. Uh. It doesn't uh. Go to any laws or I know standards.
So I apologize that this was not distributed in the packet dated. We are currently trending it. It's urgent.
Can you speak a little louder, Bruce?
Oh, yeah, I I'm sorry, um I apologize for this. This draft by July twenty twenty three not being distributed in the new, in the newest packet. And we'll be coming up the stairs any minute, we're in a couple minutes. We need to distribute.
These part is, need to put on the bulk tape up here. I'm just one, wasn't one point five acres, was two.
No, it is, it is one, it is one point five. Yeah, even where you started to was in the base of what you. Base of what you.
One. It was one of the two. Oh, I really, he can't see, he can't see, I thought two that were. I'm questioning, that's where it went.
So again, it was adjusted, we filed nineteen six first. Checked it that first, we checked all the statistics, and then we felt fifteen seventy six. About sixteen seven states. This is. The text. It would be one of those ten person. With each one, that would be almost comparable. So what would it is by nineteen oh six. So that that's only just only sixteen sites to say, so. Be looking at the same zone text amendment, both applications, won't be any differences. We're doing that to be consistent as opposed to having to try to either out. Open three or four differences between. The two texts, thanks, that's why that happened and. It is, it is different things. I did that, take certain ones, then just before you injected it. It went back to considering whether to receive it. That's definitely. But they were considering.
You're committing to application to. One thousand one point nine five.
One point five, one point five.
The first uh twenty units.
Is the acreage and twenty two units per acre. That. Sixty.
Sixteen, that is.
Six and twenty units.
But it is.
Or will it be opposite way around, sorry?
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, get the number going on. But uh.
But in terms of the tax amendment itself, and the acreage is one point five. And units per acre is twenty two units per acre. That's, that's what you're proposing. For the tax amendment.
One two eight, one two eight per acre. Point point five acres. There's some. Or three. And that will be, being honest, that I bet we do.
You know, I just. I just wanted to finish with the thought as we got off, and I, I didn't want to ask for a pass, because it's the last one. And I talked about the state changing. We talked about affordable housing, or the China. We don't have a change, so, but the only reason given is the state change of these clients. What they did was a. Missed, they turned around and said, well, it's not somebody posing the image we have on the book, somebody actually. So what that did is it affected all towns, because we have. Affordable housing, I have it in the book, that we have problems with the Berlin turnpike. That we're waiting to undergo until we get C O's. Specific, it doesn't count. So I just want you to understand that we know, and I think all the public knows, that we're allowed. Two of the ten percent, it's just that, because they changed this wording. We don't get the credit until they're actually sealed. So, anyway, but I just wanted to finish that. That's it, all right, I just wanted to. This is something else I meant to.
This is the end build development uh proposal, right? Same as though you have an end build development. And a new one, uh. One. The new end build development.
Yeah.
Uh tax amendment we did.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
About one, two months ago, right? So this is another end build development. Uh on top of our inflow the ball. Uh. The numbers are now more help, we're getting here, so that's why I'm trying to figure out what's going on here. Uh. Even if your acreage is two acres. I think it's actually uh. I don't think two unit is uh two point five or something like that.
So nineteen oh six is point one, point nine one acre is nineteen thirty four is point six eight, and then what's, what's the acreage on the unnumbered? Or some? You have no? I'm sorry, nineteen oh six was how many? Say. Wait, wait, nine one. Nine one, well, nine nineteen thirty four is point six eight. Point six eight.
So they don't have any paring and letting. This property, it's all. For these, we have to pay. Proven, if you're getting on it for. You, the application, or you really don't want to get into? Yeah, seven thirty retirement, all this is why we reduced it to one point five.
Okay, I'm gonna, wanna. Oh, June, I'm sorry, I want to go to the public and face the truth there. I guess if anyone wants to, there would be enough people. Which is, maybe it's clear, but. Um under your paragraph, that we mentioned any goals and standards. Were eight thirty G, those different things that we're trying to meet. Um and the third was um not a head first impact. Like. Yeah.
Yeah, the standard is that uh.
I was just wanting to know, what are examples of a head first impact?
Let me get you. It's not the same fact. It's in over thirty years of all the.
Oh, I know.
From the perspective of proposals that. People stand at three thirty G. But.
Okay.
I I think I have an obligation to explain to you, you know, very capable. We have here, returning calls, and I have to say, that's what we do. I think certainly if you did have counsel here, I think I'm obligated. To report to the panel to see that. I was explaining these standards to the commission, so you're not going to want to think. So I have that obligation to take that, but they rise to that level. Supporting that to you. So fix. I'll refer to your penalty term. Somebody specific that you have, or you forget.
All right, well, thank, thank you, well, we were too. I know. I know that there's some folks that wanted, Jennifer wanted to address that, okay, so in terms of, in terms of that first impacts. Uh why don't I address that? This is going to get continued, only because they have experts here, you you have your consultant here, there's a member of the public. It's ten fifteen, come on, and continue, even we. Going to some of them, yeah, no, I. Let's start off with the public, we have, first off, then is there anyone else who wants to address us regarding?
Again, George Moller, twelve three, she wrote. Just in my dealings with the affordable housing project, whoever. Eight dash thirty G came up quite often. Uh I take a little bit of issue of how it's being used here. There is no such thing as affordable housing eight dash thirty G application. Eight dash thirty G is an appeal process. Okay, it's if an affordable housing project gets rejected by a commission. They can invoke eight dash thirty G, which gives them certain rights to go forward. Everything that's been pointed out in terms of the requirements of the eight dash three. Eight dash thirty G requirements for an affordable housing plan. That's the bare minimum structure that's set out in the law that says if you meet these criteria. Then your housing is deemed a, you know, a viable affordable housing plan. That feel, because they don't want somebody, well, I got an affordable housing plan, I'm going to build. You reject it, and they think they can appeal, so they set minimum standards. So it either has to be. A, a project that is getting government assistance of some sort or whatever. Or it has to be what they call the set aside development. And what they're proposing here is the exact verbiage that is in the set aside development. The exact minimum requirements that you have to meet. If that, if you guys were to reject it, we meet the minimum requirement, therefore they can appeal. And then you have some rigorous criteria that you have to meet in order to reject it, okay? So there there's things like. Um the onus becomes on you, if basically, if if you reject it, you have to have good solid reasons for doing it. And they talked about some of those reasons adverse conditions, I know Rio Vista, one of the big ones was safety, okay? They were building three hundred and something on a small country road without making any road improvements, it was going to be a nightmare. For children trying to go to school and things like that, but it's hardcore stuff that has has to be identified. Um. You can reject it outright, or you can ask them for changes. If they, if they come back and say the changes that you're asking us to do are detrimental to the viability of the project. They're allowed to appeal it under eight dash thirty G, so keep in mind, eight dash thirty three is not an application process, it's an appeal process. And again, everything that they cover is is they're hitting all the things, first of all, there has to be a need for affordable housing in the town. Covering that, we're pointing it out, and I'll reference this to it, so there's a more need there. And that ten percent basically is like eight dash thirty G is not even, cannot be even invoked if we were at ten point five percent, it doesn't even apply. So it's not an eight dash thirty G application, it's an appeal process. So keep that in mind when you go forward. The gray area here in in this Maureen and in general, what they're going to need is some help in. What are the reasonable boundaries that can be set? Because developers are giving a little bit of carte blanche here to make those requests of you to make it viable. Because this is something that the state of Connecticut really, really wants, they want. Those requests of you to make it viable, because this is something that the state of Connecticut really, really wants, they want more affordable housing. And they're going to side on the developer's side when they say, well, you know, you, you want two parking places for, but we can only do one point six, we don't, the project won't be viable. Or the setbacks, whatever, that's where they're coming in and asking for the zoning changes. They can come in and, and, and propose a development in an industrial zone. And if it's a viable project and we have the need for it. Lots of times, the courts will side with the developer and give them the approval to change that development, so again, it's an appeal process, that's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, so over here, anyone who wants to address the commission?
Well, my, my.
Well, I'm sorry, I just. I have to ask you some, Michael.
I have some comments. Possible, based on this text amendment, but it's related to sixteen seventy six. So, do you want us to, can we, we're on here, they're going to. Second. Excellent, but if you want us to just come, come forward and talk. Our.
Um. Well, this, this text. It is the same saying, it's the same. It's the same saying, so if we, if we were to accept testimony. Uh. About the tax amendment. By the application. Attorney Smith, could you please come forward for a second? Now, don't step far, I'll go right here. But.
The, the tax amendment is the same.
Tax amendment is the same. So if the tax amendment's the same, I can accept testimony, the, the tax amendment. Again, it, it's the same tax amendment, so it's going to apply, doesn't just apply to nineteen oh six or nineteen, nineteen thirty four and the unnumbered parcel. It applies to, to any parcel for, for which the eligibility requirements in the proposal are met. So, you know, it's, it's. Not that, that, uh, you know, other parcels to which it may be applicable, I mean, we just happen to have. An application appearing later on the agenda for a different parcel. But to say in the amendment, it's just in the same text amendment, so if you have an issue with the content of the tax amendment, the, regardless of what. The parcel is that we know is coming in the site plan. We, we know that the tax amendment is. The same. Identical. Okay. So with that being said, uh, are we okay with that?
I'll defer to the commission, I, I think that everything should be kept separate, but I, I've heard what your attorney advised and.
Yeah. Because we have a problem here, and if they do want to have another tax amendment. They can. That's, that's what I'm thinking. No, that's all right, but I was just getting my, getting my.
Well, I have to read something. Question, like when this gentleman was talking about, that this is appeal. Eight thirty G is a. Appeal process, how come? So then shouldn't this? Shouldn't we be under this other, uh? What is it?
They call it the set aside development.
Yeah, shouldn't, shouldn't? This application, will both applications be under the subset?
I, I'd rather defer. I'm just kidding, like, so, no, I'm. So it is, uh, and Attorney Smith, if you'd like to come to the microphone as well. Tell it to you, yeah, so I understand that it's confusing. What is contained in eight thirty G is an appealed procedure. Uh, and, and it reverses the typical burden. Uh, so, so if the commission were to deny. Affordable housing application. They, it, it reverses the burden, so in, in. Your standard non-eight thirty G setting, the applicant has the burden on appeal to. To prove to the court, and I'm not forgetting all the reasons, again, getting late to the hour. We could certainly, um, to, will submit for the file, looking about what the standard is on the tax amendment to cases, because they go in. So, with both Judge Burger cases, and these retired and retired judges, very, very. Um, and they go into the burden, and they go into what the standard is that's contained in the statute, uh. But just to kind of clarify, based on what Mr. Miller said, would. Be a procedure that's in the statute, it shifts. The burden of proof to the commission. And, and it has in it what that burden is, okay, so the idea is. That when the commission is acting on an application, that's an eight thirty G application, that's an affordable housing application, which there's no dispute that these are. Okay? They're, they need to. Take into consideration the burden that they then have to meet. Whether, whether they're, whether they're thinking that they're going to approve it or deny it. Uh, but if they're going to deny it, they've got, they've got to meet that burden. And it is very detailed, again, I, I'm concerned about the fact that we haven't gotten through, um. The, the engineer's testimony, we've got consultants here on behalf of the commission, and we do want to hear what the public has to say. But just to, to narrow the issue again. You're going to have an opportunity, because the site plans here have been noticed for public hearing. What we really want the comments to go to at this point is the actual tax amendment language. Okay, so if you have comments on, on the tax amendment application, and, and how it has confirmed, it's the same proposal. Both applications. So. We step forward, but you, you know, we'll make some case law available, and we'll put them in the file. Chris shared with me the case, I have a case that the commission has seen before, we'll put those in the, for the file, we can even post them, can we post them? One question I have.
The. I have a good numbers on, Jim. Uh.
We talked about the text.
Yeah, well, in the text, the proposal that was denied. That was going forward. And, uh, was that one under?
Are we, we're talking about sixteen seventy six? Yes, there is an appeal of, uh, the commission's decision.
Okay. And that deal isn't. Like, yeah.
No. Still pending, expanding in the lawyers.
Okay. So. It was the. I completed your reports. Uh. That proposal shouldn't be addressed. Uh, besides, it's going to end the court's right now, being decided. So. Uh, why wouldn't we? Consider that? With tax amendment. There's a field right, so.
Because this is a separate application. And, and on submission of it. Uh, it, you need to process it according with the, with the statute, you can't, you can't put. Essentially a stay in effect where, um, the property owner can't submit additional applications when it comes to the. That's, that's not something that, that you can do.
But this is the tax, uh, additional. Uh. Spittle site plan or anything. This is the tax amendment.
Yeah, or just. Which is, and it's, it's proposing a new section to your zoning regulations. So, to the public we go, but.
I'm, I'm talking about this, but my comments still relate that to sixteen seventy six.
I, I have the. Hope, as long as I. Put the tax amendment, yeah, and again, we are talking specifically, Miss Paul Strang, with regard to the tax amendment that has been submitted. Um, it's been submitted. By both the applicant, for instance, nineteen thirty four. And, uh, the unnumbered parcel, as well as, uh, the order of sixteen seventy six as well. So it's the same tax amendment, so your comments on the tax amendment, go ahead.
Okay, so, um. I'm just. Talking, my comments basically are, are just about the, the bulk area dimensional and coverage requirements. Um. Proposed in this tax amendment. Uh. It just seems that these minimum and maximum requirements are really written for sixteen seventy six, um. The minimum front setback is ten feet, which leaves no physical protection. From the approximate sixteen thousand vehicles traveling south daily. On the Berlin Turnpike, at speeds upwards of fifty miles an hour. What would be the consequence if a car, truck, or semi. Flew off the turnpike and followed the wheels of people. Outside of the property with only ten feet of wiggle. This is, this is crazy, insanity. The minimum side setback is ten feet of ridiculous buffer for the commercial entities on each side, all. All the pine trees on the south boundary would be eliminated in order to build ten feet away. Basically, just to backtrack a little bit, basically. We, we think this is Plan B, so if Mr. Snow doesn't get his. Uh, twenty units. You know, any other way, he's going to, he's going to vote for this. Um, tax amendment, so that's why I'm basing my comments on this, um. The minimum size setback is ten feet of ridiculous buffer for commercial entities on each side, all the pine trees. You know, would be eliminated, uh, the minimum rear setback is five feet. It's laughable. This is a buffer on five feet three inches, so this is what we're talking about, but also five feet is a build, I just. Uh. And then there again, we're talking about, um. Maximum building, how do you, four and a half stories, according to Google, one story is generally fourteen feet in height. These buildings would be sixty three feet tall. Four and a half here, uh, stories. The Holly Court cul-de-sac sits at a hundred and eighteen. Feet, there is a tenth foot incline up to where the high density units would be built. The units within tower or the whole neighborhood at a site. At the height seventy three.
There's, there's, it's all back to the tax amendment. You know, they're going to state of this, alright. All of these.
The maximum impervious coverage is ninety percent of the real slot is. Okay. So that, I'm shaking my head at that, that's. That's, you know, um. It's a part of some grass frame of more boundaries. You know, and, and as for what's in asphalt. Yeah, you know, in this case, there would be no room for infiltration systems or stormwater. To naturally be dispersed in the soil. This would be, you know, catastrophic, great, you know, drainage, one. Of flooding and other things, um. And then we're back to this. The maximum number of units will not exceed twenty two units per one of those acre. This would equate to forty one, forty one units in sixteen seventy six. I know. So that's, it's basically. Okay. And the only other thing I was going to say, there again, is, you know, we understand that the commission does not have much discretion. Or power in dealing with Connecticut statute, maybe. Thirty G, but there again, I, I'm not. Quite sure why we're even under this, I think it's a suicide. But we're not returning, so what do I know?
Yeah, that's fine. Anyone else? Anyone else who wishes to address, okay.
My name is Carrie Wright, the A Kelly Court, um, in Berlin. Um. I am glad there was some clarification as to what we should be talking about as I sat most of the day trying to. Formally, a statement regarding this, I, I struggled with that question as to what, what we are talking about and what we should be addressing, so. I do have some comments specifically on, uh, the tax amendment, so I'm just going to make those briefly, and then some of the others. Um. The tax amendment. I mean, as I, I just want to make comment, as I sat here listening to the proposals, and so forth, I, I sort of was feeling hopeless that. Um. Just, the, the vision that the town has, which, which you stated throughout it, was, was sort of being, um, squashed, um, by eight thirty G. So I just, in. I want to say that I, I urge the commission to. To take into consideration all of the things. That you brought up regarding this, and what the vision of Berlin is, and. The town of Berlin. I, I, I hate to see a decision be made, because your court could do it, and it's not the right decision for our town. Um, so I urge. So the amendment is being proposed under the housing opportunity and workforce housing component. Yeah, in a statement by government, government, Governor Lamont himself, he was quoted as saying, affordable housing and what I call workforce housing. Those are our ones, those are our studio and one bedroom, often in downtown areas, hopefully next to the Mashland. The Berlin Turnpike is not any of these things. Uh. And it doesn't, putting the words in the title doesn't make it so, the pathing of this tax amendment can create a very slippery slope. While today we are discussing it for these properties, the ripple effects could be devastating. The tax amendment and plans before the commission create many issues. Related to the welfare and health and safety of the residents in the surrounding areas, cultural properties. Um, and, and many of which Linda said, which, um, setback totals. I mean, they. They are very extremely concerning, being small. Um, impacts on schools, the traffic, the environmental effects, the potential height of the buildings, all of these things. Uh, if you'd like to have considered when reviewing this text amendment. Uh, and, and to the commissioner's. Points, the, the points that were made as far as, um. You know, quality of life and so forth. And where that is. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Anyone else? Try to say next? No? Oh, I, I know, I know, I'm sorry.
My name is Peter Rowan. Peter Rowan. And I'm just strongly and humbly. Yes, the commission you just denied is. It's just not good, it's not good for Berlin, it's not good for people, it's just not good all the way around, and it's, it seems very threatening and overwhelming. There's nothing else I can say to that.
Okay, well, thank you for your remarks, anyone else?
Hi, my name is Sonia Arceoli, I'm a seventeen hundred four. Make this quick, it's not part of the test, it's not me. Uh, my concern is with the size of the buildings, the four point five story and the one point five parking space, as stated earlier today. Realistically, it's. Hard space for that, and. The amount of units. I believe that one kid per unit at least. We have to take into consideration, I have two young kids, so the schools are very important to me. Here, many years, or seven years ago, especially for this one, in my opinion. Um. Do we need to, in addition to the schools, the, the. What teachers need to be hired. Does need to be rezoned, because the amount of units that we build, five stories. Um, I have a budget for them. Um, have afforded and spoken to, um, and most importantly, the safety, buses. Will the buses be stopped on the Berlin Turnpike because of these kids? Will there be enough bus drivers to drive these kids to school, um, to pull in to? Will there be enough bus drivers to drive these kids to school, um, to pull into the buildings that are four point five stories? Will the roadside be wide enough, because they do know that I live in a cul-de-sac and I was told that the bus can't come down because they can't. Hold this time, you can go. To our right street. To get that consideration. And as well as the traffic. I do live on a cul-de-sac as well as most of my neighbors here. I have two young kids, one of them just learned to ride a two wheeler, so they're always down playing. Will there be enough parking spaces? Will people in that four point five story complex with all those units and children's parties that happen? Will it be a common area for them to play? Will they come down to our street or some else's street that. Um, can it be unsafe for my kids while they drive down, flies down the street and they potentially get hurt? Because we're not used to that. Cars that drive down, they typically live there, an Amazon truck. Or if they accidentally turn on our shades, usually the first two houses and they may be yelling maybe. Uh, so it's just basically. Safety. And the kind of company. This mass building of units could be one spot. But because this amendment or this eight thirty G allows it to open to many different areas, so it's just not this one particular. Location, what if it is three or four different locations?
Thanks, anyone else? Please, David.
Hi, my name is Shelley Peterson, fifty-seven Church Street. And I actually grew up on Holly Court and. I'm kinda sad to see somebody try and just escape the bare minimum into the town of Berlin. We worked really hard at having the town the way we have it. And as a former. Employee of the town of Berlin and the school systems. We're having a hard enough time. Keeping what we already have, you add this many more children into it. And our education is gonna go in the toilet, the class sizes are already huge. And the amount of high needs children. We already have. Is ridiculous and this is just bad to it. And unfortunately, the town of Berlin. Can't do the bare minimum for the children as a town like they want to. So I would think long and hard before a regulation. Thanks.
Thank you, welcome. Anyone else? For calling.
Thank you. Um, for the record, I'm Glenn Chal. Let's have to resume that page piece. Each four year. But it's on the character. Before I finish my remarks, start off, we're gonna talk about that. Not sure that's part of a regular. It's actually a management diet. For plants, so it's actually closely related to that. It doesn't go into reservations, it's it's not a regulation. I do have significant comments on the affordability plan, you probably seen that already. But I understand from Attorney Smith and Brian Miller, it's gonna be addressing that, so I think it would be. Another exhibit for it, um, to look at and so we can get it back then. I think my comments on the regulation amendment, um, are are sort of multiple, I I think. That's isn't fully developed yet. I think there's additional work to be studied for reservation. We did, the chair pointed out, you know, observation here about specific sites on the Berlin turnpike, you have to recognize that this regulation. Is gonna apply within the BT zone, which is really the entire section. So these standards could initially be by anybody. On any site and say, well, it complies with your regulation. So if we don't like them for side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks, let's figure out what these regulations require. Maybe we can get that as a standard. So I think you do have the ability to um. Adjust the regulation, advocate and submit something to your consideration. Of course, then we'd like you to submit what they've put through the regulation, which apparently has been here thousands of times in the Delaware community. That's not necessarily for. We think it's gonna provide the appropriate guidance of the world we want to see. Um, some of my comments, uh, I'll just kind of summarize them because I think there's gonna be some additional work for the next. And the first one, it comes down to parking, one on the spaces. You're really locked out of. You're not gonna get into the negative, you're not allowed without market standards, but parking requirement, one and a half space for dwelling, and it doesn't work if all the units block in because you're applying. One and a half space for you, they want to have space, it doesn't work for two bedrooms. So this is incomplete, it should relate to the number of bedrooms in a unit. Or they should provide for the record ample information about. Why these parking standards are. They've got a transportation engineer that has to get a report as to what is an appropriate parking standard, but this one failed on just about all kind.
Excuse me, can you just make sure you um. Lean into the microphone, we have some mind having difficulty hearing or. What, I'm sorry.
Um. I think the commission should take a longer look at section E E six of the regulation. This regulation basically said the applicant only has to submit the information if they identify in this regulation, you have the right to ask. Yeah, they can indicate in the statute requires that. You have to ask questions about potential threats to public health and safety and other legally considerable topics. But if you can't ask for the information to get it. It's it's a sort of a double standard, but doesn't work. So the issue is that that section is. I guess notorious. And these would be irrelevant. Perhaps if you had a habit, you'll see that makes few mistakes, trying not to reverse the numbers on the site. The amount of fill that's being imported into that site. Is about twelve thousand five hundred cubic yards, about seven hundred or eight hundred truckloads of dirt. To bring the site in. If you stand on the roadway at nineteen oh six, look at the roof, but the motel building is there, that's the new brain. Okay, now what's important about this is the way that that dirt is installed and compacted, so that you don't settle over. If we can't ask for engineering information, we indicate how this is going to be. So that if all by units. Rent units, affordable units. Don't end up in this situation, in Eastern Connecticut, probably foundations. So I think this standard is inappropriate. Should be moved. There's several places in the regulations. Section E E eight that can be raised, the technical standard, consistent with CGF eight thirty. As we're talking about here today, whether it's a. Regulation, whether it's a field. Running on technical. There's no way that parking or traffic or deal is consistent with eight thirty check. For that reason, nothing.
You can answer, yeah, seemed out. Be having trouble again with the audio, so we just wanna. Try to resolve that, so the before the recording is there. And anyone who's listening on, I. Is. Getting the. That's for the application, yeah, it's beautiful.
Thank you.
Um, is the uh. People on this here tonight have talked about the affordability period, you're right, this is the statute, our example, according here. I think Berlin is a good example of how difficult it is to create. Affordable, keep affordable. All we do is reserve any forty years, we have to keep building fifteen units every forty years. The present value of a unit forty years from now. Is very small. So whether it's rental or it's not a significant issue. It's quite possible that in forty years will be two or three owners down the road and two in terms of who might own their property. So I think the issue is for us to look at ways to go beyond that. And it's our regulation, we can suggest modifications or changes to this. There are committees around the state that are evaluating this language here, which requires automatic renewal of an affordable restriction every forty years. Unless the applicant proposes, makes sure she accepts an alternative. The alternative could be a payment to an affordable housing trust fund for the town. Because units don't last forever. So units are gonna. Sure, that's not fair, don't mean that, they're all the units being built, they age. Why can't they age, they may need new siding, they may need other upgrades. There comes a point that. Not being well maintained. They could. Not maintain the standards, but the owners would want and we would want. But that could be a situation of new fresher investment. Because we knew the. And again. Moving in a better direction. So I think there are ways that this can happen, we should consider that. I think the setbacks. What if I need development using this regulation? On the setbacks, there's no standard in building preparation. So. The ability they're gonna need to be sprinkled, we need to get input, building, fire market. Do these units and the setbacks need time? So that we tune in. And we can look at these plans and say this, none of the setbacks in this plan. Well, for nineteen oh six. Are ten foot. So again, let's put it in regulation, that's what it is. We have to copy, let's be muted another time. It doesn't fit.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chalk, could you just hold on one second, please? We we do have somebody that's participating online that is indicating that they cannot hear. You need to go to the volume on your own device. And turn it up. I don't know.
Are you, are you asking me to turn my volume up? Um, at home on Zoom, because I can't hear anything, it's almost as if. Somebody's eating the microphone and then there's like an echo and I hear nothing. So I apologize, I had my hand raised, if I'm not speaking at the proper time, I don't know what's going on there because I can't hear.
So you're only connected through one device? You don't have two devices going, do you?
No, I do not, I just have my laptop like I do at every meeting that I've been on.
And um, can you just maybe turn the volume up, do you have it up all the way?
It's on as high as it can go, there's other people in the chat that are saying the same thing. So I I don't know, I mean, if you wanna just let me know when I could speak, just throw it in the chat and I will. That's the best I could do for this evening.
Okay, let 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 me just take another look though, that we're at an audio, hold on. We did get information earlier, at the very beginning of the meeting that people couldn't hear, but then got confirmation that they could, so.
Hi, objective was to see.
So it wasn't all the way though, I wonder, maybe they were getting. How how do I sound, do I sound like I'm in a fishbowl? Virgil, can you hear me, do I sound clear?
You sound like you're in a fishbowl. I can hear you, but it's like underwater. At this point, it's getting late, I don't wanna hold up the whole meeting, if somebody just wants to let me know in the chat. When it's appropriate for me to speak, I will gladly do so.
I'm concerned we need a clear record. So that's my concerns. But we, the test that we hear today would be. You may be announced. As they hit, so that it's, because since here is. You're muted, if you can hear me, you're muted, do you want to mute and speak? Or Dean, Dean Coado, if you can, if you can, so we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Is it, is it any better, we we increased the volume on on one of the TVs, one of those rooms.
Okay, I'll keep listening intently.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna try to use this microphone just because everybody else need to make this work, so I'm gonna give this a shot, I only have a few more. Um, only have a few more comments left, I'm on page four of my report, the top comment number five. I think there's missing language in section E nine A. In terms of missing the income threshold language. Um, I think in section E E ten, um, there's. Question about whether the wording should be comparable, which is used in the regulation versus identical, which is used in the affordability plan, and I actually think this is really an important issue. Intent of eight thirty G, uh, and the units being identical. Uh, Tony Smith described a scenario here tonight where the. Units could be moved around in the complex, and there is a vacancy.
Yeah.
Uh, which sounds really wonderful, except that if somebody's income goes above the threshold. And there's at least an hour a day, a week, a month or a year, that they, we're not in compliance with the affordability. So the issue is you define the unit, if the demand is big as we understand it to be for affordable housing, I'm sorry. You no longer comply, you were displacing somebody who needs an affordable unit. And you need to move. So I think it sounds harsh. But I think the way for us to enforce this over time is to know that units that. They're designated a portable unit, we have a compliant tenant or occupant in that space. I think the uh, concept of the applicant should insert the phrase dispersed equitably throughout the development, the satisfaction of the commission.
Jennifer and I had an opportunity to work on another development in the, in a multi-story building, affordable units were at the bottom floor level next to the trash room. Clearly, this is not the intent of the law, the statute. So we have to be transparent on this. We can't just leave it, you know, to whim or whimsy. Going to declare, I think, or should declare it up front. Uh, there's some other language here. Uh, Chris, attorney Smith pointed this out as part of his testimony to make sure that the language is always in compliance with the thirty percent of horrible satisfied. So the first unit built should be an affordable one. Then the next two, you can mark it, not the other way around. I, I think, uh, in comment six D, uh, I think it might be in the commission's long-term best interests to establish a standard housing affordability plan for Berlin. So there's some of the challenges or comments you see in my remarks about the affordability plan. But that is the nature of what the commission received from different applications with different standards appeared by different people. It's going to be an enforcement for management later. But having a standard affordability plan could be a good thing to the town. And I think let's get the language in the regulation right now. It says. It's a stage for that. I think the commission should have the ability to approve the initial administrator. And any future administrator can work in another municipality where the builder had assigned the receptionist to administer the affordabilities with no experience in doing this type of work, qualifying incomes, et cetera. So the commission needs to be sure we have qualified. I think it's number eight. It might be useful for the town. To require the applicant to file an affordability easement in favor of the town. Uh, should there be ever a situation in the future where the property gets foreclosed on or any other type of financial event occurs? We don't have an affordability, we're not at the table in terms of solving that. In fact, there are provisions, I understand in the banking law that indicates that affordability restrictions can be foreclosed out. Not not be. Um, the last comment is, I think, as Attorney Smith recognized earlier. Uh, the town. In all deeds, covenants, other things like that. And that should be required in the regulations. What's this comment? We're also in time. So those are the nature of my comments in terms of the regulations. If we have additional comments on the affordability plan and type, I'll say, I'll have that. Any questions?
Oh. Commission, any questions? Yeah, I know. We were.
Well, I'll be on, if you want the video. Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
So before, before you do that, let's just assure that, that Zoom, given this version did indicate that she would like to comment. Let's see if we can. If anybody else.
I just want to make one clarification without any, we are off recording this. And we have a. It will take. Well. We'll take.
Yeah. It can be downloaded. When it, when it gets downloaded, it does, um, it does uh, download in MP three, MP four, nine minute. So it's, it is not the easiest thing because you have to go from one to the next. It, it is very, very clear. Confused it. Transfers. Um, rest assured, for those of you that are on Zoom, that you will have an opportunity if you would like to listen to that audio.
Okay.
So.
So.
Virgil has her hand raised. She can let her know in the chat that she can speak that.
Yeah. I will wait for.
Hello, can you guys hear me? Nope.
She's unmuted.
I'm trying both ways.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay. Been a long night. I can't hear you, but I hope you can hear me. Um, so I forgive me if what I'm gonna say is not relevant or I, I don't know because like I said, I couldn't hear more, most of what you guys were talking about. But, um, you know, we've been, my name is Patty Bergio, twenty seven, Holly Court. Um, I, I'm kind of shook that we're having to deal with this all over again. Having been, you know, stressed and struggled nearly two years with this development and all of its uncertainty. Um, you know, we kind of realized that Mr. Snow is probably just flexing with this new plan and hoping that his plan B attempt to scare planning and zoning and the neighbors will be, we're hoping that that would be denied and put to rest for once and for all. Um, but I want to know how a setback of five feet from the abutting neighbors could even make sense to anyone. That i- it's a four point five story building that would be towering over the home, the homes on Holly Court. That's not in harmony with an existing neighbor, seems to be more like a high rise that's suited for New York City rather than Berlin, Connecticut. And definitely, in our opinion, not considered little house living. Um, our concerns also with parking, um, that it feels like more and more likely since there's going to be more um, you know, people living there, that the overflow would end up on Holly Court. Um, rather than in this high rise when it's full, um, or people are entertaining their friends and and family. Planning for one and a half cars doesn't make a lot of sense to me when most families have two to three cars that need shelter or parking. Um, this isn't what the people of Holly Court signed up for. We really aren't looking forward to all of this extra traffic and the thought of having over a hundred potential rent, renters reaping havoc in the area that is like our little oasis and changing the way that we live on Holly Court. Just to think that our peaceful neighborhood could be disrupted with renters who don't always have the best interest of their property or the neighborhoods at heart is frightening, upsetting, and quite frankly, quite disturbing to all of us. I, I, I questioned, did anybody ever consider the implications that this would have on existing neighbors? Um, and how it would impact us? I, I urge the commission to, commission to think about, I understand there's possibly, um, you know, ways that we can look into this for the health and safety and the welfare of the public and the neighbors. And I really think that should be the primary focus here.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone? All right, the hour is getting very late.
I will make the motion.
Sorry, I did have one other message from, um, the engineering consultant from the town. Yeah, from Dave. Um, he had a deeper meeting short time ago and defer to. He was later. Okay. All right.
Just, yeah.
We must. Continue to the next meeting day or everything special meeting day. Cause right, if you, what's wrong? So you need time to know this. Now, is, is on the air or? Hearing has already been noticed. And then what they're waiting to listen to me say is, but we don't, we notice generally. The new public in, that was the act. We've been advised, you know, that. That you took, continue. And, um, or, I believe, as I understand it. I'll need confirmation on that, but, um, it was already noticed. So I'll pick the best. Know at this date. Or from this day, we've been at war on the office. But we have a few, we don't have a few, we're giving the twenty seven. What is that for? The, the, it's a combined meeting with the, the commission and P O C D committee as we continue doing the zoning study. I'm just looking at my calendar and see what we can. And then, I think, the councils were just, uh, looking for options. I think you want the. They should. Play break Tuesday. Can't break once. No, I won't be able to channel her. Try to figure out the day everyone goes. We gotta get through the rest of this. We're not going to. So. So this is, this is a third, yeah. Then we just put something on. Let's do. I'd suggest that the applicants are just going with all this. Do this. DM in order to respond or engage. Do you have any questions? You have to, we, the point where each of these four public hearing. Well, so the next three public hearing need to be opened tonight by the statutory timeline that the plan is only the open hearings and last few, last eight. And the extension time for which you can delay opening. And use some extension time for any of those. This, the hearing on the proposed text amendment that you have opened, you have thirty five days before it needs to be closed. On the plan and zoning commission has a combined meeting on the twenty seventh. We get seven, next Thursday with the P O C D committee and I'm gonna do text amendment. Continue to text amendment workshop analysis. Next, as far as next week goes. Uh, I am out of state the twenty fourth and twenty fifth, as is Dylan. He's out for the entire week. So it will have limited staff proportions of next week if we're to talk about a meeting, a special meeting.
Schedule our P O C D and do it on that day.
I could, I, you should do what you want. I mentioned Sergio. Yeah, and we do, if they grant, if they extension time, you know, it's gonna go beyond today. If they offer extension time, then you next meeting start with third, August. We have such, two thirty. Around the other division.
Whatever dated it's. If I'm being asked to, uh, I know, or no, but we understand everybody. Okay, here. If, if I was communicating with, uh, your town attorney. I, I kind of think it would maybe differ on this, try to maybe open up the hearing. Without any comments? Issues, everything. So it's time anyways.
So you want us to go in the act of?
Well, it's a privilege. That open, indicate that they continues to the, uh, to the third, that's what public. Much people.
So the issue with become you opening it and you're not hearing the presentation and taking any comment. You're starting the clock.
No.
And, and I do worry, I need to worry. Um, and I said, I said this to Attorney Smith, and I'm not really ever in favor of opening and then just continuing. Because I feel at a minimum, you need to hear from the people that have actually showed up. So you've got this situation of not doing the presentation and not hearing from the people that show. And then what if they can't make it August third? You know, um, you know, I, I just, I I'm not, I've never been freaked out about that. I'm just being aware. And we just continue the meeting to August third? Without, and it's the, well, continue, you're saying continuing the opening of it. To continuing, to continue the opening of it as indicated by Mr. Stacey. You need applicants go down. As the applicant.
So, so I do want to make one other clarification that the, this commission and this department, as far as I know, has never required the applicant to renotice the sure there was, they took on, that not require the applicant renotice the uh, abutters or anyone else with regard to to extending a public hearing or the continued date of a public hearing or the rescheduling, if it's announced at a meeting. It hasn't been the policy to re. The sign, of course, any application that it's signed, the sentence to remain in place. But the regulation says the sentence remains in place, it's the application, it's court. So, you know, that. I just want to make sure you understand. No, for the cap play as far as.
So what's a
So I'm not quite sure if I respect for the record, I'm following you. I'm not sure what exactly you asked. Cause I've heard it a number of different. It would allow us to be a grander, uh, compared.
Level where we like to just say, of course, this agenda just.
So I don't think we would have any objections to that, but I do think that you have to be very clear on the record tight as to each one of the any three applications, should treat them all separately. Uh, that they're all running, all those, each one of those maybe have, they have to read it, but I just be technically correct, I think. Will be all forgot. Third. You know, there's the post, the, uh, the opening here will be postponed to the third. We'll open it at seven o'clock, these chambers. I think, that's how it's spread. Just want to make, just trying to make it.
Yeah.
Just extended. That's already been open. So, uh, you continue this and then I make the motion to open these, um, third.
So, 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 make, you know, make a motion on B one. Or so is, what I'm hearing is is to make a motion to continue hearing, it's B one, to uh, the regularly scheduled meeting on August third. And then you will be bound to make motion each of the next patient with the consent of utilizing the extension time for each of the next patients individually to what's the word?
Yeah.
Well, you're, what you're intending is the opening of the public. You're making clear that you're not continuing the public care because the public care wasn't open. Open, you're continuing the opening of it. So we need motion.
I'll make a motion to continue longer to.
Which is the.
Eleven each land residential and fill development, visionary, more like family residential use of the housing opportunity or from how we can on the twelfth, August.
Okay, so Brian has a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Zibbott. Further discussion, all those in favor, I. So. Okay.
To continue the opening of the application for site plan approval for a fifty-two multi-family residential community, screws book apartments, real property, going nineteen sixty-six, Burlington, map twenty-nine, dash two block one fifteen lot seven, nineteen thirty-four, Burlington, map twenty-one, dash two blocks, one fifteen, lot eight and zero, Burlington, bike. And twenty-one, dash two block, one fifteen, block A. To August third.
At seven P M.
At seven.
I was watching.
Yeah.
We might have a might have misspoke on a lot of like.
No, I was saying seven o'clock. It's just the other one too, just made there is stuff. So August third, that's on, sorry. The answer is business first, original one then. Uh, so for D.
Can I ask you business first, rich original one then, uh, so for D I. To clarify, question, nice clarify. I clarify that at seven o'clock, it's rescheduled at seven o'clock in the town council.
Yeah.
Okay, now can I re-. Yeah, I can accept that.
Further discussion, I'll.
So. Did you stop here and I'll bring me the motion, so then we do. Second.
Okay.
Like, oh.
Okay, so further discussion, all is in favor, okay.
Make a motion to continue opening with, um. He said, to the application of little house living LLC prepared by Christopher J. Smith, aspire alter of Pearson Hello, he submitted for special general statute. Eight thirty, she of formal housing lands, you. I propose so next amendment to create new. Eleven each planned residential infill development cautionary, multi-family residential use for the housing opportunity. Upon it to August third, seven, seven P M, town constitution.
Okay, and the motions, pay the second line, Mr. Jersey, for the discussion, all is in favor, uh.
Motion for part two, with the consent of the applicant to continue the opening for the application of site plan approval to. Twenty unit, multi-family residential community on real property, noise, seventy-six, Berlinter, but. Map twenty-two, yes, one block, one fifteen, block ten, the August third, the town council chambers at seven, yeah.
By Miss Jersey, for the discussion, all is in favor, uh. Perhaps to the old business or.
I think it's all been.
Moving on down.
We'll get to it soon. Thank you, everyone.
All right. So, yeah. All right. The whole thing say, for the subject of the application. All right, motion to deny by Miss Jersey, and, uh, second, just for the reason stated. And for the reasons stated. And goes down the second, this village. Nodra, further discussion. All is in favor. The other one changed. Six, seven. We want nothing out. Please, nothing else. Yeah, I'm not gonna let him. And it, for maybe, yeah, I went to it, did notice that. Canada's. That's because you need to, oh, I know, sorry. As a firm as maker. Uh, so we're just gonna accept this is a business, so. And so I change the. No, back. Yeah, so, I just want, uh, like, the mayor, see that we're having agenda that. Under commission business, you have the cannabis usage, because you directly staffed to work with regard to it, so. Working on handing. Information relating to it, although I do understand that any. Rather. Is looking. Is citing for those. So, well, this. So I said, we would say quickly what it was, be distributed, because they distributed.
This, this is just the first draft. The survey, and, and I did try to just incorporate everything that we discussed in terms of. Uh, you know, the, the beginning with the survey, maybe some definitions, um, uh, the critical terms. Um, and, uh, that survey itself is very brief. Um, so if you wanna email me comments on it, um, I'm happy to take those and, and then revise the draft, whatever your thoughts are. Um, and I can give you additional alternatives, it is, it is a bit, a bit long in the tooth. At the beginning, which would include all the definitions, but. Um, I know that it's, you know, it's important, because you, you've been all dealing with this for months. Um, but the, the public doesn't necessarily understand all, all the different types of establishments that you can consider allowing to. Realize this, yeah.
All right, and I think it's important too that, um, we do finish the survey, and we'll, we'll put it out there, but they, we probably must advise me with that.
Well, what I, what I did at the beginning was I just indicated that the results of the survey are one tool. That the commission is gonna utilize inside of what we're not, uh, to direct the draft of a new regulation. Because you have received so much information, so, yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a motion to adjourn then, or?
Yes.
Make a motion to adjourn.
That is, for the discussion on Bourbon, now, favor, and there's those. Said, take you.